All right, well, it being 6:01 and all trustees being present either in person or online, I'll call the meeting into order and let's start with roll call, please.
Ben Bonpoch.
Here.
Chris Hassig.
Here.
Ross Krebs.
Here.
Colin Laird. Christina Montemeyer.
Here.
Jess Robison.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have accounts payable from June 11th, meeting minutes from March 26th and April 9th, Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission appointment for Michael Gorman, Andy Zach, and Lori Patrick, and a liquor license renewal for Eldorado. Any questions or items to pull for further discussion?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion. Motion, that's a, that's a yes, right? Yeah. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is persons present not on the agenda. Jessica, did we do signups? Okay.
We sure did. Amy Hausman.
Just remind everybody, please use the mic there. Address your comments to me as the chairman of this meeting, and you have three minutes.
Alrighty, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. You've heard me speak before at prior meetings, asking for you to put a ceasefire resolution on your agenda. The reason that I have heard for not doing this is that the trustee should focus on local issues and that that is what your community expects. I believe that many in this community are very concerned about the war in Gaza. Yesterday, I participated in an organized discussion at the Third Street Center. There were 27 participants plus a facilitator. The participants was, were of diverse ages and backgrounds, and they were there to discuss Israel and Gaza and how the horrific current events are personally affecting each and every one of us. Again, this was at the Third Street Center here in Carbondale. At First Friday, last Friday, the ceasefire now Roaring Fork Valley group at a booth, and it was well-visited with many people stopping by to voice their support and take information. More signed our petition in support of the town of Carbondale passing a ceasefire resolution. This petition now has about 550 signatures, primarily gathered at the past two First Fridays and at Dandelion Days, all very local Carbondale events. This petition has been emailed to you, all of you, for your review, I believe. A significant amount of our federal tax dollars go to support Israel's military and to providing the very bombs and guns that have killed over 35,000 Palestinians. About 8,000 of those were children. That's more than the total population of Carbondale, because I looked it up today and saw that it was listed in 2024 as 6,816. Think about that. Can you imagine the entire population of your town all gone, dead? There are so many better ways to use our tax dollars. Our president, President Biden, is calling for a ceasefire, and many towns and cities have passed resolutions in support of a ceasefire. It's easy to think that we cannot make a difference, but even a small community like this can help to influence our state and federal representatives. So I'm asking you again to please put a ceasefire resolution on your agenda, with the understanding that it may not get enough votes to pass, but at least should be discussed and considered. I ask you to support peace and an end to this war so that all of the hostages in Gaza can be returned home and so that both Palestinians and Israelis can watch their children grow up as we get to here in our beautiful valley, rather than mourn their untimely deaths. A ceasefire resolution might not only end the horrors going on today, but may also pave the way for all people in that region to coexist in peace in the future. And every small action may help make that happen. Thank you.
Kyle Wade. Sorry.
Thank you guys for being here and having this. Having this. I too am part of the local Roaring Fork Valley ceasefire group, and I was just trying to talk about what exactly, and what is a local issue? If it's just geographic location, that's the only thing that is, is the only qualification to make it a local issue. That would seem very strange, because, I mean, just the fact that we're here talking about it during this local meeting makes it a local issue. And we had that talk at the Third Street Center yesterday. Two different groups of people coming together. I think that qualifies as a local issue. And I know, was there anything that could happen in this town to make it be considered a local issue? If a local person dies over there, if a family member dies over there? And I know going public with something as controversial as this is, I can understand your hesitancy. It, I mean, it makes a lot of sense. It's an issue where people care, care very much about on both sides. And no matter what decision you make, you'll have, you'll get flack for it, which is, so it makes sense why you don't want to make a decision at all. But I refuse to believe that none of you here have, do not have an opinion regarding genocide. That just doesn't make sense. How could you not feel for these people? Children are dying, thousands, tens of thousands of children are dying. That's a number that I have a hard time just visualizing. And no matter what, the longer you take, your inaction and entropy will choose side for you, regardless if you make it or not. That's it.
Thank you.
Rachel Hahn.
Hi, there's, there's two of us that are going to speak, so should I have signed him up as well?
Are you speaking separately or?
Yeah, well, I'm speaking, we're both speaking, but it's the same topic.
You have three minutes total.
Okay. So I am here to file a formal complaint against the planning director as I feel he is misinterpreting the Unified Development Code in denying my building permit application. This is one person making a singular determination, and we have limited recourse of action. My husband and I are longtime residents of this valley. I grew up here, and my husband has been a professional for 30 years. We have both been contributing members to this community and the Roaring Fork Valley. We bought our property as is in 2021. We have yet to embark on any exterior improvements. We now want to enclose a 134-square-foot existing porch, which is already covered. This entails literally moving a wall six feet. During the permit process, my architect, Brandon, completed an impervious area worksheet and pointed out that the existing lot does not conform to the town's impervious lot coverage standard. We've been offered three recourses of action by the planning director. Tear up a substantial portion of our driveway and replace with permeable pavers that will cost approximately $50,000. Apply for a costly variance, in which case the planning director is the same person making the determination. Or three, go before the Board of Adjustments, which we understand does not currently exist. Brandon, Brendan has asked him numerous times to please show me specific language in your code that states the structure is non-conforming, and the response we continue to get is, it is the role of the planning director to interpret the UDC. So can you please advise us on how to handle this situation? And then, my architect is familiar with the town code and feels this determination is unjust, and he will explain why.
I, my clients bought a property that is non-conforming, specifically in the impervious lot coverage area. Impervious meaning that water cannot penetrate that particular surface like concrete. They purchased the property, property this way in the town code as specific language to recognize this type of condition and allow for expansion. Basically, rain or melted snow has to find its way to a pervious surface so that it can soak into the ground. A lawn, for example, is pervious as opposed to a roof or concrete, which would be impervious. The existing area in question is already concrete, which is impervious, and substantially covered by an existing roof. If I am a drop of water, then this proposed enclosure makes no difference as to my ability to soak into the ground. Per the UDC, the town code, Section 742A, an expansion of a non-conforming structure may be allowed only if the expansion can be accomplished in compliance with all applicable regulations in this code, including, but not limit to, limited to setback, lot coverage, height, and site development standards. No expansion may increase the level of non-conformity. The non-conformity in this case is the lot coverage. Again, if I am a drop of rain, this proposed enclosure makes me behave no differently. I have worked through several design iterations of their desired remodel, and due to budget and current cost, cost of construction, we are proceeding by moving one wall six feet to create an additional 134 square feet of enclosed space. This is a very minor adjustment to their home, but the small adjustment will make their living room much more practical and usable, and this is allowed by the town code. I hope you can help my client do what they are allowed to do. Thank you.
And he brought a picture if anyone wants to actually see what we're talking about.
Thanks. Am I allowed to share a quick graphic? You can leave that with us if you'd like to, or, yeah, I mean, we, we see it there.
Okay, this is basically the existing porch, which is covered in concrete, and we're just trying to enclose it.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sue Zissles. Hi, I'm Sue Zissles from here in Carbondale, and I'm here to speak for Age Friendly Carbondale about the Downtowner. And this is not a complaint. This is, I'm voicing our support for this amazing project that's going to beginning, beginning in July, and we have a vested interest in its succeeding. And we would like to offer our assistance in helping it succeed by helping to spread the word. If we had a graphic or a flyer or something, and that we could help bring it to people that may not be looking at their email or may not be otherwise able to figure out what the new procedures are. And we also are offering to directly assist some people that may need help with the app or making the arrangements or learning what to do. And we just want to make sure that you understand, here we are to help you. And yes, it's an amazing project, and hooray for its success. Thank you.
I just say one thing. I did speak to our public information officer today, and she will be in touch with you, and we welcome your help.
Nikki Delson.
Great, thanks.
Hi, I'm Nikki Delson. I'm the chair of Age Friendly Carbondale, and I live in Carbondale. You probably know that Age Friendly Carbondale has done a survey of Highway 133, and we will be presenting that to you next month. But we wanted to know if we could have the opportunity to get on the agenda one small piece of it, which is changing the designation of 133, which from our look at CDOT regulations, and we talked with both Kevin and Jared, looks like it's possible to change the designation from the bridge to the roundabout into a business district, because we've had so much development there, which would lower the speed limit if we got that through CDOT to 25 miles an hour. And from the roundabout to the first RVR traffic light as a residential district, and that designation would enable that to be 30 miles an hour, which is now the whole thing is 35 miles an hour. So that's one ask for us to be able to come and present what it is that we know about that data and how we got it out of the regulations and familiarize it with you for your consideration. The other piece that we're not exactly sure how to do it, and I spoke with Kevin today, and it's a different designation, but we don't know how to do it. And having this conversation would be helpful, is to change the speed limit around the school zone, which is now 35 miles an hour, but to put an ask to CDOT that when children are being dropped off or they're getting out of school, that it go down to 20 miles an hour with the flashing light, because that, from our survey and from our observation, is one of the biggest and most dangerous jaywalking places where people just run across the highway because the signalized way to get across is so far away, especially for little kids. So that's the ask, whether or not we could get some time on the next agenda just to present you with that one section of our big report that we'll be presenting. I think it's sometime in July, and that CDOT will be at that meeting.
Okay, and just to be clear, you think it's urgent that we address the rest of that before your other agenda item that's four weeks from now?
Um, I'm just, so with the time limit, I mean, it's just so, to get it on the agenda, to get you all of the background information, which we may not be able to get to you on July 9th, but if you think that they're just overlapping concerns and that we'll have enough time, I could, you know, we could postpone it.
Okay. Let's talk about it afterwards. But it seems to me like one, one presentation would be better than two, to look at it all, unless there's some urgency to the other one, but thanks.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Lauren, do you want to respond at all to the residents who brought up the building issue? And just, obviously, we're not going to address that right now in detail, but just what their next steps are and, and how they can follow up with staff on that?
I know that we are in the process, this, Jared, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but because this is, would require a variance in the opinion of our planning department, it would need to go before the Board of Adjustment, which we are about to have you reinstate.
Okay.
We have, we've been recruiting people, and we have some experience. People are coming back on.
Okay. Would their point of contact continue to be Jared, or is that you, or I just?
It could be either one of us, but Jared's the one who has the technical knowledge.
Okay.
If they're more comfortable, feel free to contact me.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's hard for us to respond in real time to these very detailed requests with no background information, but I'll touch base with Lauren and follow up with you as well to make sure you guys have the information that you need. Okay. Thanks. Moving on then to trustee comments. You may have comments since our last meeting. Colin.
Thanks, I just wanted to thank the folks who brought up the ceasefire resolution again. It's really a challenging topic, and I'm very hopeful that some of the work that's happened at the federal level will move forward. Very difficult and very heartened to see the conversation that happened yesterday at the Third Street Center, and I hope that can continue. I still believe that this is not a topic that we want to entertain at this board level, but I'm really thankful that people are still pushing on this issue. It's clearly something needs to get some resolution, and I think at the federal level, some of the work that's been going on nationally, I think, has made a difference. So thanks for all your efforts. And Age Friendly Carbondale, thank you for helping out with getting the word out about the Downtowner and all your work on 133. Much appreciated. Nice to be back. I just wanted to thank everybody for giving me a little time off, and I'm pretty excited about moving forward. I'm going to the board, Rafta Board Retreat on Thursday, and we'll be talking more about the Downtowner and ongoing funding for that. So looking forward to that. So nice to be back. Nice to see you all. Nice to be here with a new board. Thank you.
Hey Colin, Jess, any comments while we're over here? Okay. How about on the side of the room here, Colin?
I mean, I don't have much to report on it, but I attended Senator Hickenlooper's Town Hall in Eagle two weeks ago. I mean, one comment I will make is that some of the ceasefire group was there, and they did not let Senator Hickenlooper answer any of their questions meanwhile being at the decision-maker for something like this and continually interrupted him and actually ended up having to be escorted out by police. And they were some of the same folks who are, come to us every other week except for this one. And I had, it was just solidified to me that it is not, this is not the format for that kind of discussion. They were extremely disrespectful, despite him trying to answer questions and despite him saying he voted for a ceasefire resolution. And just kind of, it just was embarrassing, frankly, that it was folks from Carbondale area who were represented, representing, I think, a really great message in this way. So it solidified for me that I have no interest in having this on an agenda. We are not a decision-maker on this topic. The UN Security Council passed a resolution yesterday. They must have known your meeting in the Third Street Center was happening. And that is the decision, I mean, those are the decision-makers on this kind of topic. And so I'll just reiterate that this is not something that we have any sort of power to resolve. And I have, just say it again, I'm not, I'm not interested in having it on an agenda. And other topics that folks brought up, there were a lot of folks talking about immigration, both newcomers and then folks looking for a path to become, you know, to get their work visa after being here for 25 years. And it was a bilingual town hall. They had translators available or interpreters and, you know, the translation devices and stuff. So on that note, it was a really well-done, a really cool opportunity. Senator, so next time there is one, might be a little more prepared, and I could go with some questions from us or anything we want to work on. The other topic was housing. I sat next to Gail Schwartz, and she really talked to them a lot about housing, which I know she's been in the paper for some of her messages, but directly asking him for funding from the USDA to help with habitat projects and stuff like that. So I think it was just really good to know that we have advocates from here who, you know, are tracking that and wanting to talk to our senator about really important local topics.
Great. Thanks Erica. Ross, any comments?
I've made my, my, my thoughts clear before on the Palestine issue, so I'll let those stand. Thanks again to Age Friendly Carbondale for all of the work that they've been doing. Absolutely fabulous work and effort. And I wish we had that same sort of enthusiasm from other elements of our community. I hope, I hope you'll, you'll reach out to others of all ages and get them, get, share some of your enthusiasm with them. I hope, you know, I think it's infectious, and I hope we can get, get some folks out there to, to do whatever needs to be done to really address our traffic and pedestrian issues. I wanted to, to bring up one topic based on reading through to like the, the extra items at the end of the agenda, which is, which was reading the, the minute, and I don't know exactly where this should fall, so I'm just going to take care of it now. But reading the minutes from the P and, last P and Z meeting, which was where they discussed at length affordable housing, you know, changing the affordable housing requirements. We didn't see those before the work session that we had with, with those folks, and a handful of the folks who are here for that work session hadn't even been at that meeting. If you look at the minutes of that meeting, it's really where the meat, like where the, where the rubber hits the road in terms of the hard questions about how do we come to some sort of percentage? Where, where might the development community push back? Either sort of financially or legally? And there were, there was a lot of kind of hot topics brought up there that, that I think is, it is the purview of the board to really discuss. And so I don't know whether, I know there's, there's reluctance to having a, an official liaison of the board on P and Z, but at the very least, I would like to see some, like, someone from the board who, who agrees to listen to the meeting. It's a public meeting after all. And, and can at least say, hey, I was there at this meeting, and, and these were the things that came up. Because in this case, there was no way for us to have known anything about that meeting, because minutes didn't come out, you know, for it until, until now for this. And, and I, I mean, and it speaks to larger issues, I think, with P and Z, which is they're tasked with doing a ton of work for not even a pizza, you know? And, and so I don't know if there's some way to make, make that, that work more worthwhile or fair. But I think it's something that we ought to consider as we, as we really bite into some real, you know, potentially big changes to what we expect in, from, from development and big changes for both the community and for the, the development community as well. So just, just a thought, I don't know where that falls in this. The other question I had is, was, was, was just to, to offer support for putting on the agenda the Age Friendly Carbondale report on 133. I don't know whether that's officially on the agenda, there was some discussion, but, but certainly that's, that has my, my vote to get it out there. I think the more that we know, the sooner, the better. And I don't know that we need to separate the business, you know, the labeling of 133 as a business district, apart from their, the rest of their report. But I'd rather, I would like to hear that report sooner rather than later.
Thanks Ross. Christina, any comments?
Um, yes, thank you. Last week, I attended the Virtual Mountain Chamber Alliance and Colorado Competitive Council. They had our senators and representatives there. We had Dylan Robert as our Senator, District Eight. And they talked about 2024 Colorado Legislative Session, bills that passed. I know Dylan talked a lot about the water conservative measure, bill passing. Mark Caitlin talked about the funding for rural health care, and Megan Lukens talked about education. So a lot of good things going on, and they said now is a good time to reach out to them because they're out of session, and they would love to hear from people who want to talk more about Senate and legislative issues. And I again echo what Colin said and Erica said about the ceasefire. And thank you, everybody who did a public comment. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks Christina. Chris, any comments?
Not much. I, I support having the age-friendly thing be one presentation and not two. And I think I have, I've seen sort of a preliminary version of it at the, that was at the Bike Ped, at Bike Ped Trails Commission meeting. I agreed with a fair amount of it, but I would urge the age-friendly, the focus of it has been on, on pedestrian and, and bicycle crossings of the highway and, and that safety aspects of it. I would, but I would, I would urge them not to try to derail our ongoing roundabout project, which is, which is fundamentally a vehicle project. And I think that the, the goals of finding a crossing near Neaslanic between, or between Neaslanic and, and Industry Place can still be accomplished without getting into a whole argument about trying to relitigate where, where the roundabout has been. The, the board has been pretty set on this for about 20 years, I would say. So, so I would just urge them to try to focus on the, on the actual pedestrian improvements as part of that and, and, and just try to make it as constructive as possible. The only other thing I'll mention is, I know we have two members, Jess and Christina, going to the, to the Chamber of Commerce liaisons. But I don't think we necessarily have somebody officially assigned to the Tourism Council, and I would encourage them to maybe think about divvying up that duty and potentially having one of them go to that meeting. As the Tourism Council is actually dispersing a great deal more of our money than the Chamber of Commerce. So I would like to have more information about what they're up to personally. I think that's it. Thanks.
Great, thanks Chris. Okay, well, it sounds like we will be hearing from Age Friendly Carbondale first meeting in July on both of those issues. So thanks for all that support. I just wanted to add, First Friday was fantastic. I know that that's a ton of work for staff, but everybody was out there, and I feel like June is usually the biggest one of the year, and there were a lot of events. The pool fundraiser kickoff, where I got a nice snazzy hat that you two can, can get with only a small donation. And the Wilderness Workshop Party and just a lot of other things. So thanks to everybody who, who puts all that effort in and makes First Friday what it is. And then Christina mentioned kind of engaging with our state legislators. Good timing, because they're clearly out of session, because they are reaching out to us. And Representative Velasco, who represents us in the State House, reached out, and we're going to find a time for her to come, interact with us, probably at a July meeting. So that's great. I think that that's all I had. Anybody miss anything?
I just wanted to say that I think that I am, will be attending the Tourism Council meetings as well as the Chamber meetings. That's my understanding, so.
Awesome.
People are covered. Yeah.
That's great to hear.
Great. Okay. Moving on then to attorney's comments. Mark, can you? All right. Thanks. Lauren, do you have a manager's update for us?
I do. Just a couple of things to be aware of, and hopefully I'm not repeating myself because it's been a while since we were here. We did hear back from CHFA on our tax credit financing application for Town Center. We were not selected for the 9% tax credit financing in this first round. We have had, the architect and art space and myself had a very fruitful meeting with CHFA, where they gave a uh, the architect and art space and myself had a very fruitful meeting with CHFA where they gave us feedback. You will all be hearing next week about that because, um, Andrew from Art Space is going to come and give an update at the work session. So I'll just leave the details of that further than, um, also with regard to Town Center. If you are not aware, I did put in a few months ago, an application for congressionally directed spending, um, to HUD for our, well, to Senators Hickel, Libra and Bennett for our Town Center project in the amount of $2 million. It's a little bit of a long shot, I think, but it has been forwarded up through committee. So, you know, it's, it's a very, very long process, but we'll see what happens. Last Friday morning, uh, if you have not heard, we were informed that we were selected for the, uh, Colorado Energy Office's Public Building Electrification Grant. That is $600,000, 348,000 of which will be used to electrify the pool building. And $252,000 will go towards full electrification of this building. Yay. And, uh, the rodeo last week, the first rodeo was extremely crowded. As I understand it, anecdotally from my children, there were more teenagers there than I'd seen in one place since they came to Colorado. But we also had police and security and sheriff's office out in force. It wasn't perfect, but we had much less of a problem with parking on County Road 100. And we also had, um, from what I hear, the shuttles that the rodeo was running from the orchard and from this parking lot over here were full all the time. So it's a start. We're, we're getting there. And if you hear, uh, for those of you who were here last meeting and we were talking about bear, bear proof, dumpsters and everything else, they're out there. So that, um, just in case somebody follows up with you. Um, and lastly, the Make a Splash campaign officially kicked off last Friday. And, um, I will say that with the two grants that we have received and the, just the first couple of weeks of individual donations, we are, we've raised just about $950,000. So we are off to a good start. We still have a lot of work to do, but, um, you know, all puns intended, we are making a splash. So, um, that's all.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Any questions on any of those items?
Um, I just had a question about the, um, you said that you were going to let us know why we got declined for?
Well, i- it's not really exactly why we got declined, but the areas that CHFA said that they thought our application wasn't as competitive and the places that they thought it was competitive. You can probably guess that it's a lot more expensive to build things in Carbondale than it is in many places in the state. I think that hurt us. Um, there were also, they wanted a little bit more diversity in our AMI levels with the affordable housing. And they weren't exactly sure what to do with this mix of, up to 80% AMI, the, as far as CHFA is concerned, market rate, the 100 to 150 AMI and the commercial all combined. So, um, when Andrew comes next week, we'll be meeting and talking about what some of the options might be. And that will be something that he'll be presenting to the board and getting, uh, the board's take on.
All right.
That answers your question, Christine?
Okay. Well, we have quite a few action items on the agenda tonight, so let's dive into the first of those, which is residential curbside trash and recycling contract extension discussion. Hi Kevin.
Keep the grand enthusiasm going.
All right. Recycling. We might not like trash, but we like recycling.
Yes. So the item before you is, it seems like only yesterday, believe it or not to me, but we're at the end of the first term of our, uh, residential trash and recycling collection contract. And I wanted to get the board's feeling about whether or not you were interested in renewing the contract. I did put quite a bit, maybe not quite a bit, but I did put some background information to try to go, where did we start? Why did we even start talking about this? And then kind of the process we went through. Because I think there's only two of you that were here when that happened. So, um, I'm not going to bore you with details, but happy to answer any questions. The gist of this is both from a service perspective and from a fiscal perspective, I think it would be smart right now to do the two-year renewal. But that's ultimately up to you guys. So if that you're interested in that, we'll bring it back to a future meeting for actual action. But if we're going to go another direction, probably need to decide that soon.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Discussion. I mean, this is, I think, pretty straightforward. The way that Kevin's presented it seems like a pretty, um, pretty clear path forward. We'd be happy to discuss the history of it and how we got here. If, um, if you board members are interested in that, but, uh, I think people are pretty familiar with the service. I, I appreciated that in the memo, Kevin, you noted that, you know, we did have a few hiccups at first, specifically about overflow charges and things like that. Um, but those we've, we've resolved. We've had, you know, really clear annual updates from our contractor on this. And our original process, we had two quotes. It's pretty predictable. It's, there's two companies that do this. And, uh, so I think we can anticipate what the, what the process would look like if we were to go back out to bed. Thoughts?
Thanks for putting together a real comprehensive report. That was actually good, good background, I think, for everyone. The only thing that I would add at some point would be, it would be nice to have some sort of a recycling audit. Just, I think for reassurance that our stuff is going where it's supposed to go. I mean, I think it's, it's complicated, complicated to throw every, through, through everything that's legally allowable in there. And then also hear reports constantly that stuff isn't necessarily going where you think it's supposed to be going. So, I don't know. Nothing, we got a long meeting tonight. So nothing that we need to belabor at this point, but it would be some sort of a, an audit, I think would be informative.
And we do get that annual report on the breakdown of our trash. And I think that'd be an ideal time to talk about that, to really understand kind of their, it's not supply chain, it's a waste chain, I guess. The way they take it to the facility in Denver and the way that, what happens to all the things that aren't recyclable and all that. What time of year do we get that? I feel like it was fairly recently.
I think the last one may have been in January, but I want to, I think we can do one like late summer. And definitely include a little bit more of a comprehensive, this is where it goes. Get some data on, you know, to your point, how much of it actually gets recycled and how much just can't be for whatever reason and ends up in a landfill on the front range instead of up here.
Okay. Other thoughts, Erica?
I, I agree that I think we should continue the contract with them. I do think we know who we would be deciding between if we went to RFP and that would be a lot of work. But also they have smoothed out a lot of kinks that it feels like we'd have to revisit with a new contractor. Um, and I've been, once we've moved through those, which they responded to, um, been really happy with their service, it seems like. The other thing that's convenient with a two-year renewal is the, you know, the state legislature passed the, um, Producer Responsibility Act last year, which is, uh, the, how it's going to work is there will be, then be funding and they're predicting in about 2026 that can go to haulers for recycling. So it might adjust our costs overall. Because this is where people who produce plastic packaging have to pay into this fee, have to pay this fee into this fund that's then, um, dispersed to manage recyclables. And I mean, we can ask them where the recyclers are going, but it's really a statewide issue of where are the markets? And that is something that this funding and other funding that the state, I mean, it's really a high priority increasing waste diversion. So it's good timing for us to see what their perspective is and then just know that they're in the same boat as all the other haulers. And then in two years, we might be able to even reduce our costs, even, you know, it might be a totally new contract because if they can get funding from the state to cover those recycling costs. So, I just wanted to add that it's a, a two years, a good chunk for what's happening at the state level or a good, a good timeframe.
Yeah. Thanks for the reminder about, uh, what that policy change at the state level and that we haven't seen it implemented yet, I guess, but
Right.
that could have some pretty big changes down the road. Any other thoughts, Jess?
I just wanted to say thanks for the report. It was helpful to see what has happened in other municipalities when they've gone back out instead of renewing and the price increases that they've seen instead of just sticking with what they have in their terms of their current contracts. That was helpful and I'm fine with sticking with a renewal.
Okay. Okay. Chris, any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I'm on board with the renewal. Um, it's just funny. I happen to be looking down at this. I'm in, uh, Somerville, Massachusetts, and I'm looking down at this mailer that I just, uh, it's on the table here and it's their, basically their waste mailer. It's a threefold thing that looks like it just goes out to everybody. It's pretty good. It's, it's just all about, don't put this stuff in the trash. Recycle mattresses. When are our day yard wastes? Hazardous waste, blah, blah, blah. And I know we, we've, we've already, you know, we talked with them quite a bit already about, um, you know, their efforts to educate the public. And I think they're doing a great job on that. But, uh, I think just, yeah, it, it obviously as we go forward, just further ways to keep educating people and, and figure out exactly, yeah, what is worthwhile recycling and what's wasting their time. So, yeah.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
Unless that's chained to the desk, why don't you bring it back with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's actually an interesting idea that it combines kind of the curbside service as well as the things that we do centrally, the waste diversion days that we have and the yard waste days, so that that's all in one place on sort of an annual update. So that's cool. Um, that's why we travel, right? Learn things from other places. Uh, so it sounds like you have the board's support to bring us back, uh, an ordinance to renew this contract for two more years. And, you know, I would just add that, uh, as far as pricing, um, even when we started this, and I think even more so today, I think most people are paying about half of what the free market competitive rate was before. So I think it's really delivered on, you know, our, we started those discussions. It was really about bear resistant containers and the fact that we had an ordinance that said, you have to have a bear resistant container, but the haulers weren't all providing them and people couldn't really comply with the ordinance. And that's what kicked it off. But I think it, um, it delivered a lot of other benefits to the community as well. So, thanks Kevin, um, for all the information and we'll see that ordinance soon.
Um, it'll probably just be an agreement, not necessarily an ordinance.
Okay. Great.
Right on. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right. Uh, next item is the Mountain Fair 2024 Facility Use Agreement and Liquor License Approval. Hi Deb. Hi Jamie. You're welcome to join. I don't see Chief Wilson here, which means he has a lot of faith in you. And he has faith in you even if he's here. But I thought he would be, but this was a great, uh, packet and, and I, I can tell that so much work and collaboration has gone into getting it to this point, um, which probably is going to make it pretty easy for us to say yes to. So, if you want to start with an overview of, of anything that's changed or anything that you'd like feedback or input on. That'd be great.
I should introduce myself.
Yes, please do.
I'm Deborah Colley. I am the Chief of Operations for the Carbondale Mountain Fair that is run by Carbondale Arts. And right behind me is Jamie Abbott. She's not going to speak unless she needs to, but she's the Executive Director of Carbondale Arts. And I'm grateful she's here. She's my boss. And I'm also like, this is my first town council meeting with new town council members and I'm pretty excited to see you all here. So, in general, um, you said it yourself, like this fair is really like a deep collaborative effort of many, many people and entities. And I am really grateful for the continued, uh, support from members of this town government, um, members of the Carbondale Arts staff. And also just like all of the incredible support we have from our 50 different supervisors who really, um, put in a lot of time and effort and love and dedication to the fair. I really feel, I just kind of want to say like, since 2020, I, I, you know, I've been in, on more of the leadership side of this team since 2020 in some capacity. And now of course more, but we've really, in comparison to the previous years before that, um, when I was on Carbondale Arts staff, Mountain Fair has had to deal with some pretty big shifts and changes. And, um, uh, we're hoping that what we're planning this year will actually give us kind of a, uh, a map of where we're going, um, because we've been shifting and changing quite a bit from year to year. From security to layout to where the, where it's going to take place. And now of course this year, sorry, I keep hitting the mic. Now, of course, this year, um, we're, we're problem solving the loss of the oasis space in the park due to the new pool construction. Um, and I just want to also say that this is giving us a great opportunity to problem solve the challenge of increased crowds or congestion in the park. So if you haven't already heard, um, we've been working with town and Main Street members, Main Street businesses, to close off Main Street from Sixth to Fourth. Basically at the end of Went, all the way to Fourth and relocating the oasis to that zone. It's going to become an Oasis family walk party. We know that that comes with its challenges of managing heat. Um, and we're working on that pretty much. That's the, that's like central to the planning. Um, but what this does for us is finally the oasis stage is separate and can be almost like a side stage. And we can work towards developing that for being a place that crowds can disperse towards peak hours. Later down the pipe, when we know where we're going, know it works. We also, you know, the, the, uh, Carbondale Community Schools, um, Kids Carnival is coming back and there'll be a great anchoring presence down there. Of course, in the past, we have been on Main Street, but it's just been vendors. And it hasn't really like drawn crowds and been an anchor and really felt like it was a functional part that was still a part of the fair, a functional part of the fair. Um, but by having the oasis down there with plenty of activities and working with businesses down there, um, we feel like it's going to be really vibrant and a place that we can grow into. And also taking the long view that potentially there's going to be new development with Choco's Park, maybe with Town Center. Maybe it's important to be connecting this, you know, humming ball of activity that is Mountain Fair down into these other parts of town, um, as our town shifts and changes. I have included so much information in this packet about what we're doing down at the oasis. And I would love to answer questions about that. Or if there's any other thoughts or concerns about what's going on back at the park. I will say like, as usual, we have another incredible entertainment lineup. We, we had more food vendors apply than we've had in the past years. And that's a really big deal for us. That's, that's where we make, um, some of our, that's where we raise some of our funds. So, and there's, yeah. So there's so much business as usual, but the oasis has been like where we're really shining a lot of, energy, light and pouring a lot of intention. So, yeah.
Great. Thanks, Deb.
Yeah.
Thanks for the overview. Um, I might make a couple of comments and I just want to clarify, process wise, Lauren, we need to approve the special event liquor license. Is that the only thing we need to approve? It's a facilities use agreement. It's usually approved at the staff level. Is that right?
Oh yeah. I'm happy to speak about that too.
Okay. Yeah. Why don't you go ahead? Just so that we're clear on what our action is.
Last year I talked so much about security that I wasn't sure if I needed to talk about, uh, our new layout plans. Um, yeah, we'll have the cantina, the cantina back in the pavilion where it's been for at least the last three years. Um, that system's been working well for us because we can spread out lines, um, have our wrist banning stations just kind of outside of where people start coming in. We'll be running everything off of credit. Well, we'll have all credit. Uh, in the past that we've had cash only and we started introducing credit cards. So that will be running smoothly. It of course raises money for not just Carbon Arts, but other nonprofits who win the lottery to help serve. They, they get tips. All of our team, our supervising team is tips trained. And then I believe that each individual or each organization is required to provide one tips trained person. Our cantina team, um, Evan Crean, Daryl, Daryl. Jeff Lockhart. He would love me that I said his nickname. I actually never say his nickname. Uh, Jeff Lockhart. They've been doing this for so many years, once with, with our mayor. And they really run a tight ship and, um, I'm inviting them this year to I'm inviting them this year to come to our, um, park orientation meeting with the police, um, and EMS. So that they can know who each other are. I think that might be helpful. Um. What else can I share?
That's most of it. I mean, one thing that I noticed that was new this year, uh, that I appreciated was just the. Evacuation zones on the map, but maybe we've had that in the past, but I don't remember ever seeing.
Was new last year.
Okay.
But it's the same this year.
Okay.
Not changing anything. Added some of that to the Main Street. Um, area. So it's clear that we have like sections to clear out needed quickly.
Um, yeah, and I would just say overall, um, as you said, Deb, like you guys have gone through a lot of changes in the last few years, but, um. I think one of the really positive changes has just been closer and closer collaboration with. Town staff and, and law enforcement in particular, and looking at this as. A major public event that has to have a lot of emergency preparedness involved. And I don't think we used to. See it that way and we do now, and that's the world that we live in. So I appreciate that you guys have been really constructive in that partnership and the security requirements and all that.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that. Um, what questions the board members have? No question.
Looks good.
Yeah, looks great.
Okay.
Um, so is our, our only thing is to approve the liquor license? Do we need to approve the facility use agreement or that's Steph level? I guess we could say and just.
I would just say and.
Okay.
We'll just say and we've just kind of bundled them all in there.
Approving all, approving Mountain Fair.
Yes.
Fair in general.
Someone would like to. To approve the facility use agreement and special event liquor permit for the twenty twenty four Mountain Fair.
I'll second.
By Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thanks for all your work and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. I hope all of you come and help volunteer.
Signups are live online.
And the listening audience, volunteer.
Okay. Um, next up is appointments for Planning and Zoning Commission. Jerry, you gonna help guide us through this a little bit? I think a little bit of background, um, about how this process is different from our other boards and commissions and.
You guys applicants want to swing up here, you can grab a seat over here.
Do we want to just call people up one at a time? We might do that. Let's do that. We'll just call you up one at a time. That might be a little. Less crowded and more comfortable for you. Um, and Jay's here from Jay Inkstrom, Chairman of P and Z. Thanks for being here, Jay.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
The double mic. Yeah, see if you can get one working, then you'll be all set.
So, um. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a kind of quasi judicial board that serves at. The, I guess the pleasure of the Board of Trustees and they make decisions on behalf of the town. And so. Um, how our code is set up is kind of due to that elevated level of decision making for the town. Um, the code, uh, requires that, um, applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission be interviewed. By the Board of Trustees and selected by the Board of Trustees. Um, and so, uh. What we've included in the packet tonight is, um, kind of our twenty twenty four current. Planning and Zoning Commission member contact list and, um, the applicants for the vacancies. We've had, um. Uh, four applicants, um, excuse me, uh, five applicants for, for the positions tonight. Um. And, um, just to kind of give you a very brief overview, um, the vacancies that we're looking at filling. Um, are essentially two positions. One was vacated by Jess when she was, uh. Voted to the Board of Trustees and that's a regular voting member. Um, and then we have one alternate position that was vacated by, um, KG Anetti when he had to step down to do some professional and personal obligations. Um, and so what we are recommending, or historically we've had, um, uh. Alternate members for the Planning and Zoning Commission be appointed to those regular voting positions so long as they desire. Um, our current alternate Cindy Suplegio has expressed interest and would like to be appointed as a regular voting member. And so what we've, um, prepared for you tonight is essentially three motions. The first motion would be to, um, appoint Cindy as a regular voting member. Um, and she would fulfill, um, Jess's vacated term, which would expire on August thirty first. Uh, twenty twenty six. And then, um, two, uh, alternate members. Um, with, uh, two separate terms. So, um. One would be a term expiring on May thirty first, twenty twenty eight, and this is part of the town's initiative to move the. August, um, expirations to May. And so, um. That current position actually expires this August. And so we figured it would be a good opportunity just to appoint them for a full term. Um, and then the second position would be a term expiring on May thirty first, twenty twenty five. And so. Um, we kind of left those blank. We just want to highlight that there are two different terms. And so when you're appointing somebody. Um, you have to point one to a longer term and one to a slightly shorter term. So. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, looking forward to hearing the. Interview questions and answers and what you guys decide.
And did P and Z have this discussion and, um, kind of interview people? I can't remember.
No, so the, so the process is just here with the, um, Board of Trustees and including, um. One to two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Great. Um, I mean, maybe before we start, uh. And what we'll do is I'll just call each person up, tell us a little bit about why you're, why you're interested in the role. We can ask a couple of questions. We'll hear from the next person. And I think what we're always looking for. Is, um, just a, a broad range of perspectives, different kinds of expertise. I mean, Jay, is there anything that you feel like right now we should be. Looking for as we hear from applicants, um, on the P and Z and Jess, you might have insight on that as well, having been one of the seats that's been vacated.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's just really important to make sure that we have a variety of, um, fields on, on P and Z. So I think as long as we just really. Focus on that and making sure that we have good variety.
Okay.
That's really what I'm pushing for.
Okay. Jess, anything you'd add to that?
I would just say, uh. A Board of Commissioners that looks like Carbondale is diverse like Carbondale, um. Inclusive like Carbondale.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and these are always a little tough. There's always a little awkward moment of like, how do we kind of make the motion and, and all that? You know, we, we don't like. Take each person and vote. So generally what we'll do after this discussion is. Let's discuss it a little bit. You can speak kind of in favor of somebody and say, I think this person would be, you know, a really strong addition or brings a perspective that, that they need on the board or something like that. And then, um, you can make a motion to appoint somebody. So I'd, I'd say we'll take a separate motion, like. Do we want to appoint Cindy as recommended to the voting position? We'll vote on that. And then do you want to make a motion for the first alternate and then somebody else or you, same person could make a motion for the second alternate. Does that sound like a reasonable process? Okay. Um, well, I'm just going to go in order of the, uh, applications in our packet. So Anne Crimmer?
Do you want me podium or table?
Either place. It's totally fine. Yeah. Most people would rather sit down, so.
It is. It's kind of an interrogation.
Yeah, just.
All the mics.
Yeah. CNN.
Thank you.
What's the verdict?
Um.
Yeah, just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you applied and, and what you feel like you bring in the commission and, um, you know, it's challenging. We've got five applicants and we can only.
I know, and, and this is my second time I've interviewed. The last time, um, Kate and Elizabeth got, got the spots.
Okay.
And I think Jay, you might have been there for my interview. Um, but they were on two different nights, so it was a little strange. So it's kind of cool to be doing it, that everybody came. Um, again, my name's Anne Crimmer. I have lived in Carbondale for twenty five years. Um, in the valley for twenty eight. Um, I'm a bookkeeper. I've been a bookkeeper. Gosh. Trying to think when I switched. Around nineteen ninety eight, I was a chef before that. That's why I ended up in the valley. Um, and worked my way out of that, uh, took some accounting at CMC, thanks to Larry Good. She forced me to as part of my job. And I've been bookkeeping since. Um, I would consider myself a layperson with a little more knowledge than the average bear. Uh, because I have done books for GCs and subs for on and off for years. Um. I don't own any other properties. I can't think of any conflicts. Um, I think the most important thing. Uh, for P and Z is to be consistent with representation. Um, because I know in the past, um, there were problems getting quorums. Or things might be continued and it'd be a completely different board. Um, so I think our obligation is to represent the people of Carbondale. And also, um, follow the rules of the comprehensive plan and the UDC. Um. I've followed that for years. I mean, I was back in town mother days. I was at the meetings for a comprehensive plan. Um. So I've been around. I'm more of a stalker. I'm an introvert, but I'm here and, um, I really hope you'll consider me.
Xan, any questions for Ann?
Did you work with the town, town, town mothers during that era before Mike?
Um, I consider myself a mother lover. That I was on the email list. Um, and I, I think I was always conflicted a little bit. Um, I think, um, it's hard to go back twenty years and, and compare Carbondale now to Carbondale then. Um, I think it took a long time for people to be comfortable. With the level of development that is in that area. A lot of people still aren't comfortable. Um.
But I think a lot of good conversations came out of that.
Um, I know that year the comprehensive plan, uh, was done in small groups in people's houses. Um, which was a really cool thing. Um. I, I think it got a lot more people involved. Because of that push to be involved at that time, because of that development.
Great. Thanks. Other questions?
What's your favorite building in Carbondale and why? Probably Forest Street. Um, I can't tell you which building. Um. It is the one that's now has a finance company in it. Because I worked there when Chocopers were in there. Um, so I got to work in the building when it was kind of falling apart. You couldn't go upstairs. Downstairs was a little sketchy. And I, uh, they put a lot of work into that building and I like that it was revitalized. And I just kind of have a personal affinity for local bricks. I like going to places and seeing the different colors because they were, you know, from the local brickmaker. Um, that part's really cool.
Great. Thank you. Colin, did you have something?
Those are great questions.
Okay. Anything else, Erica?
Um, can you talk a little bit about an experience you've had where you had to? Either kind of ask hard questions or make a difficult decision despite what the people presenting to you. Wanted you to decide.
Um, I can say that, um. I'm known in my family for being opinionated. Good or bad. I, I don't know that I'm easily swayed by emotion. Um. I do like to be, to see data or facts behind something. Um. I've had lots of experience working with a variety of people. I mean, cooking is like.
There's a variety of people.
If you've ever worked in a restaurant, um, under stressful times. Um. In my work in bookkeeping, um. My clients. All expect me to be honest with them and I am. And I, I consider that a very. Deep core value that I have. Um, I'm not a good liar. Um, I'm also not a good bullshitter. If it seems like I have a stick up my butt, it's because I'm nervous. Um, but I, I. I think I have enough compassion to understand what people. Are really asking about, um, because I know that especially in P and Z, um. Jay knows I've spoken out about some things in my own neighborhood. Um. And it is hard for people to separate their feelings about. What's happening versus what's in the code. Um, but I think it's important as a P and Z rep to adhere to what we have. Because that's the fairest way. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anything else? Okay. Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
See, it's next in our packet here is Candace. Hi, Candace.
Hello.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for applying. Um, just tell us a little bit about yourself and, and why you'd like to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Um, I was here like six months ago, I think. Um. I had a really big day in Redstone with a eighty five degree house. So if I seem a little weird, that's it. I tried to crown myself for it. I, um, an interior architect, um. Kind of a bridge between interior designer and an architect, actually. Uh, I have an environmental design of interiors degree. And, uh, that's a bachelor of science. So it's very different, um, a lot more spatial planning, um, exterior to interior relationships. Spent a lot of time in Italy studying how towns are related to. The king coming through and then that's how the, the squares and the piazzas and, and everything was centered around that. So it's. It's, it's always been a thrill of mine to understand each town, city when I go to them and not just the inside of the house. So, um, that's a big background. When I was in our, uh, Masters of Architecture, which I didn't finish, it was my favorite part was the planning and zoning. Um, so yeah, um, I've been in the valley. Uh, as a part time child in Aspen, um, between Aspen and Philadelphia. Until, uh, a year after college when I moved here, moved to Aspen, moved to Denver, then moved back up. Into Carbondale. So I've been in Carbondale since two thousand and seven. Um, had, um, my second business. So I have my own business with a business partner. And. I got involved with the Forest Service last year, last summer, and that made me really aware that, you know, to get more involved in the town and. I was ready to serve and get more information. Um. It's always an important thing for me is clarity and then understanding of what's going on and how do, how do we help our community? Yeah.
Well, thanks. Questions for Candace?
I'm gonna ask the same question.
Sometimes we ask the same question.
What's your favorite building in town and why? Yeah, I got a few. Um, I love. What's the building called right now that's being, Karoo's rehabbing where bonfires in and. Dinkle. The Dinkle Building. Especially when you see the pictures of what the Dinkle Building looked like back in the day. Um, I also love the Thompson House. Um, my son went to Ross, so we walked by there a lot. Probably my two favorites, but with all the history of Carbondale is really special.
Okay. Other questions? Jay?
Uh, yeah, I guess, um, I'd just like to make sure just because we end up with so many. Professionals, uh, in, in the, in the design realm on planning and zoning, I guess. Uh. Question for you would be what, uh. What do you think that you would specifically bring to the, to the commission? Um, what do you see as like one of your strong point that you're, you're really, uh, hoping to, uh. Give to the, give to the commission to help make decisions?
Um. I'm really good at listening and. Understanding the clarity of, and facts that are going on. Not taking sides. And figuring out, you know, what, what are, what is, what is it that we can do? What is it that we can't do? And then how, how do we create? Something together, right? Taking both sides. I, as one of my superpowers, clients constantly say to me. You know, no way we could have done this without you, or they can't decide on things and they're not really sure what exactly. They even want and, um, they're arguing all the time or whatever it is. And I come in easily and just, you know, okay, I hear you. I hear you. Now. This is what we're going to do. So, um, sometimes my, my sister and I call it, you know. Fixed fixers. We're good at fixing things, you know, seeing a creative solution, not a roadblock.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions?
That kind of answered mine because I was going to ask the same thing, but I think you just answered it.
Okay.
I mean, I'll ask a, um. A pretty general question, just smart growth. You know, that phrase gets thrown around a lot. What does that mean to you and in any examples where you see us doing it right or where you see us doing it wrong as a town?
Um. I am all for development and, and communities growing. So, but I do think that. Some, like I said, you know, finding out the facts, figuring out what, what can we do, what can't we do, what's historic, what's important, you know, and there's always that balance. Um, a couple of things that I think like the roundabouts going in before the massive construction. Um, or bike pass or, you know, seeing things ahead, which I know is not normal. You know, I, I know from, from a planning zoning perspective, that is, you put it in once you know what is going on, but. Um, I also think that. Helping create a path for development. Helping create a path for developers in a, in a way that supports the community such as. Okay, I live across and my office is across from the city market, development of all the housing. So, and I don't know everything, so if my facts are wrong, but. Employee housing going in before they build the free market, like things like that. Is there, is there a way? I don't know. I'm not on planning and zoning, but is there a way to work with developers to do things in a way that support the community first? Before they start making a profit? Because, you know, they're doing it last in this round. So things like that where, you know, finding a compromise, finding a way to make sure the community gets all the little pieces. That they need to operate and be safe and, and make money at the same time while being smart with sustainable design. New ways, getting ahead of the new ways. I was on, was here at one point and I know gray water is not included in Colorado. Well, why can't we push that, you know? So things like that where. I love that Carbondale is so forward thinking. I think there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, have a committee that can see, see how. Yep. Can, can we push that envelope a little bit?
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. All right. I think we'll move on to our next person. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I had to water that off.
All right. Next is Franco. Thanks for being here. You can just introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Why you'd like to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you trustees and mayor. My name's Franco. Fairly, fairly new here. Just met Jay yesterday, I think. And yeah, so I moved here back in September for a job working for Picken County as a planner. Love it already and wanna keep on staying there, working there and then, you know, contribute to the community that I live in here. So before I moved here, I was in Salida. I was a planner over there. So I know a lot of the ins and outs of, you know, around the roughly 6,000 town government and the inner workings. And before that, I worked in Littleton for a surveying company. It's a little bit of a shift in career. So yeah, the reason why I wanted to be on this board is, you know, for the time that I was in Salida, I just was always doing the. What Jared did and put together the packets, presented them and I wanted to be on the other side of that and, and contribute. But I couldn't, which is unfortunate. But now here I am, I have that opportunity and I want to put my name in the hat. I did watch the October 10th. I guess town trustee meeting, just because I like to nerd out on local government. And so I saw the questions that you asked. Could you make the 70% time? And it's on Thursdays and that shouldn't be a problem. I think there was, I got some notes here. What else could I go through? Talked about the projects that you guys were kind of grappling about. And alternative position would of course be my ideal spot, just so I could learn the ins and outs of the board. The commission and, and work my way up so that, you know, I could get that U D C kind of underneath me. Cause I know it's a large document. So yeah, the, I think that's the reason why I wanted to put my name in the hat.
Great. All right. Well, thanks for, thanks for doing it. What questions do we have for Franco?
What's your favorite building in Carbondale and why?
Well, I am, I am naive to the names of all the buildings in Carbondale. And it's, it's something that like I always kind of thought about a little bit when you first said that question. And, you know, being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think it's always a great opportunity to see what's next. So, you know, maybe I don't have one now, but maybe I'll have one in the future and maybe it's not built yet, but we'll just have to see.
Great. Thanks.
Can you speak to any of the successes you had in Salida or anything, you know, something that, that, that you thought you guys, that you or, or your compatriots there did right? And that might be applicable here?
Yeah, so like here in Salida, we're also working on art space. So that's definitely a project, doing design charrettes and kind of getting the community together and, you know, reaching out and, and getting public input. Which is, it's always fun to work with P and Z on the staff's perspective. But to be a part of that voting element would be a great opportunity. We were doing some master plans for some city-owned property. And so that was another public outreach and kind of just maintaining the community balance of that small town charm. But also keeping it inclusive. And making sure that, you know, the R A F guides could live there and, and the restaurants employees could work, live there. And so it was always a balance of, you know, development versus. You know, keeping that character that we also desire.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Franco.
Thank you.
Next is Jesse. Thanks for being here, Jesse. We've chatted before. Yeah, tell us a little bit about yourself. It's a couple of new board members since your last year. Three, actually. And why you'd like to be on the commission?
Yeah, absolutely. Good to see everybody tonight. Thank you guys for taking the time. Jess, congratulations. Christina and Ross, also congratulations as the new trustees of the town in Carbondale. It's exciting to see some new faces up here and also good to see some familiar faces. I was here with Candace about six months ago. My name's Jesse. I work as a fire inspector, plan reviewer with the Basalt Fire Department. We do everything from fire and life safety inspections to wildfire mitigation projects and inspections for homeowners or commercial properties in the area. From Snowmass Village all the way down to Missouri Heights where we neighbor with Carbondale Fire Department. And a reason why I wanted to join on the P and Z for the town of Carbondale. I live in Carbondale. I've been in the area since 2008. So I'm really looking to serve my local community here in Carbondale. It's a really neat town and all the projects that I've seen come to life in the recent years. Have been good. And I always think there's, Mayor, like you said, more room for emergency preparedness. Unfortunately, that is, you know, what we have to live with in, in modern day. Whether it's for special events or just for new buildings going into the, the town. And so I think Jay to maybe beat you to your question is, I, I think that's what I can bring to the P and Z board. Is that fire and life safety perspective, water supply, right? How much growth can Carbondale handle with the water supply that we have? Things like that, that maybe not a lot of people think about because it's just not in front of your face on a day-to-day basis. But for those reasons, I'm looking to join the, the P and Z board. Jess, my favorite building in the town is the library. Because I think that every question that we have is probably, the answer is probably within one of those books. In our neat little library that we have here at the town. So. Yeah, if anybody has any questions, feel free to, to ask.
Anybody would have a building that wasn't a historic building that, that stood out. So that's a, that's interesting that you, you picked that one.
I love it, yeah.
Questions for Jesse?
Way to get ahead of it. I would caution you to, 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 yeah, be careful referring to it as a little library. I got slammed in the papers for calling it a little library. True story. I had, I actually did have a question. Can you speak a little bit more to your, to your thoughts about water? And I know that's something that, that I know is sort of always out there, but we don't get in too much.
Yeah, absolutely. I used to be a town employee. I worked for the utilities department and so it allowed me to see the water supply side. We have a lot of aging infrastructure in the town. So that's also something to really consider, right? We don't get to see it a lot because it's underground. And so with new construction, new projects going in, it's something to definitely take into consideration. Is how much can, and I'll say little, hopefully I don't offend anybody, but how much can our little wastewater treatment plant handle? As far as, you know, these mixed-use buildings, multi-story buildings are, you know, maybe coming into play in our near future. So you just wanna be considerate of that with the wildfire risk. I know it's a big hot topic in Colorado with a lot of the insurance providers. And that's one of the questions that they always ask is how much water is your local fire department gonna bring? How much resources can they draw from? And it, it's something to consider for the town. But yeah, hopefully that helps.
Awesome.
Thanks. Did you have something?
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about, you know, how you go about making hard decisions or letting folks know who might be presenting to you? And that might be when you're reviewing their plans or something like that, whatever context you wanna put it in. Of just, if you have to make a decision that they might disagree with you on, kind of walk us through a little bit about how you make that. Feel comfortable making that kind of decision, I guess.
Absolutely. Thank you. I got, um, part of my job is as not only a planner reviewer, but we also approve the liquor license special event. Permits that come through from the town of Snowmass through to the town of Basalt. And one thing to consider is always that, you know, what's always gonna win is, is fire and life safety, not even fire, right? Just remove the word fire, but life safety overall. I think there's no negotiations on that. When it comes to life safety, like Mayor Ben said earlier. You know, emergency preparedness, it's just something that we have to be equipped with nowadays more than ever. And so we are always open. We, we are community oriented. We are here to serve the public. And that's what I'd like to do with the P and Z position is open communication with the public, with the members of the town, the trustees. With the colleagues of the P and Z committee, open collaboration, communication, making sure that everyone is. Had their space and their time to voice their concerns so that we can move forward in the best direction. And hopefully life safety trumps a lot of those concerns that can come up in those hard situations.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for Jesse?
I'll ask my smart growth question. Like what, what does that mean to you? And have you seen us do it right in any cases that you could point out? Or where we've kind of missed the, the boat on smart growth? I think compared to Snowmass Village, you know, and that's a, a big, big difference, right? I think Snowmass is, you know, they've, they've really grown over the last few years and they continue to grow. As far as Carbondale, it, it's got really neat charm that the town. I'll use the word small again, Ross. It's a small town, a mountain town, and I, I do see growth in its future. And I think, you know, we are the people to hopefully make that smart move when it comes to smart growth. And like I said, with water supply, aging infrastructure, emergency preparedness, those are things that take into consideration so that we can grow. In a smart way if we'd like to.
Okay, thanks. All right. I think you're off the hook.
Thank you, guys.
And our final applicant is Mitch. Thanks for being here, Mitch. Thanks for applying. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, please, and why you'd like to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. My name's Mitch Haas. I mean, I'm happy to see you. I, I think you can't go wrong. You've got really good applicants, whoever you pick. I've been working as a professional planning consultant in the valley for 25 years. I keep all my work to Aspen and Picken County. I've done occasional forays into the town of Basalt and town of Snowmass Village. But I've always minimized that and I've avoided working in Carbondale just because I could. And I knew at some point I was gonna live here and didn't want to be on both sides of the table, so to speak. So, yeah, let's see. I've, before that, I worked for the city of Aspen as a planner, so I've sat in the staff position. Before that, I worked for the city of Fort Collins as a planner. So I've had experience in that position. I've had 25 years now experience sitting in the applicant position. I've never sat on that side of the table. I, I think I've learned sitting in all the other seats, what it's like to sit on that side, but haven't experienced it personally. So, you know, I think I kind of know the game, more or less, kind of inside and out. And so I moved to, I lived for 25 years in Basalt. I moved to Carbondale. This is my third summer here now. Kind of always wanted to live in Carbondale, but I was commuting back and forth to Aspen all the time, so I just stayed there in Basalt. But now I've stopped commuting. I just work out of my home and I'm empty nested. So I finally have time to do more volunteering and I thought, well, I love this community. I wanna find a way to get involved. What can I bring to the community and how can I get involved in a way that maybe I have some value? So Planning and Zoning Commission seemed like a logical choice for me. Doesn't mean it's a good choice for you to have me, but hopefully it would be. So that's kind of where I come from.
That's great. Thank you. Questions for Mitch?
Any project you're really proud of that you've guided through or, or worked, you know?
Yeah, quite a few.
Yeah, anything in particular?
Yeah, I think the ones I'm probably most proud of are, are the large ranches I've worked on. Where I've been able to create large amounts of conservation easement land, clustering of development. You know, you can't always do it the way I want as a consultant, but I, I try to get my clients to do the best thing possible. I, I like to believe I've earned a pretty good reputation in doing that with the jurisdictions I've worked with. So yeah, I'd say a single project that I'm most proud of. I, I got one in the process right now. It's sitting in Picken County, going to the commissioners next month. And I'm quite proud of the way we've put it together where we've eliminated quite a bit of approved development. Clustered everything into one little spot rather than spreading across an entire ranch. Protected all the habitat areas and the riparian areas, et cetera, things like that. But on an urban setting. Yeah, I'm proud of a few. I've done, for instance, in the city of Aspen, I've worked on lodges. I've worked on downtown mixed-use. I've done residential, of course. But in the city of Aspen, recently I'm working on 100% affordable housing development. I recently completed a project where we granted the city and county conservation easement over pretty much all of Shadow Mountain. In exchange for all of 4,000 square feet of land. So again, those are a few.
Great. Thank you. Other questions?
What's your favorite building in town?
You know, it's funny. I've been sitting here thinking and I'm like drawing a blank and the only thing I could come up with is I really like my home. But honestly, I, I, I've, I've said for years, I lived in Basalt. I used to tell the planners in Basalt and my friends who are on the town council there. Stop looking at Aspen for what they do and how they deal with planning issues. And you have a much better example that you should look to right down Valley in Carbondale. No one seems to wanna hear me on that point there. And it's funny that Franco mentioned Salida. Cause I always told Basalt, you should look at what Salida's been doing also. It's a perfect example of how you deal with right on a river and making vibrancy and vitality out of a town. They seem to have fallen on deaf ears mostly, but. So I've always felt Carbondale's done a really admirable job. While other jurisdictions have kind of faltered in similar atmospheres.
Thanks. Yeah, Jay?
I guess I just want to ask you a big kind of dream idea. If you were to see something happen in Carbondale, what would be, what would be the thing that we'd be most excited about? To see like a direction that Carbondale would move in with planning?
That's a tough one on the spot. It's a good question. I, I, you know, really since I've been here, I've felt like the direction the town's been going on most everything is. Things I could get behind and support. I, I haven't seen a whole lot where I've said, wow, what were people thinking here? You know, I, I'd like to think we could maybe clean up more on 133 as an entrance to town. You know, I, I know, I recognize it's a highway, but it doesn't mean it needs to necessarily look like or function like a highway. So to me, I think that would be the, maybe the first thing that comes to mind is. How we can get. More town-like development along the highway corridor.
Okay. Other questions for Mitch?
I'm gonna change it up a little bit. Since you have such a deep kind of planning consultant background, if you're in the P and Z. What are some of the key questions that you think should be asked of a applicant? That you might uniquely kind of bring to the table, um, that others might not have thought of or since you've been on both sides?
I mean, I I like to think it's really more case specific, depending what they're applying for and what the proposal looks like. Um, you know, I I do believe in following and adhering to the rules on the books, but I also know one can interpret those uh at times in in a way that that's helpful. Um. You know, I've, I know the the way people present things to have it look uh to maybe not say the uh hundred percent of the story, but to hold things back. So I I think I can probably pick that out when I'm looking at an application or hearing a presentation. Um. I've never been accused of being shy about sharing my opinions with people one way or another. Uh, so I don't worry about that. Um, like I said, I've sat on the table where I have to bring bad news to people. Um, or recommend against a project. I've sat on the other side where I need to convince you that or try to change somebody's opinion uh to come along with what our thinking might be as a developer or client applicant on a project. So I don't know what uh what specific questions, because I think it really depends on what's what's in front of me. But hopefully I can be probing deep.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Mitch. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, so now's when we just kind of have an open discussion, um, and then we can move towards some motions, but um I I'd say first maybe to just um get the easy part done. Does anybody want to discuss anyone else as regular voting member instead of the staff recommendation, which is Cindy Suplesio, who's currently an alternate uh advancing her to um voting number? Might feel like we need to do that differently.
It's sort of institutional, uh, but I was the word, but yes, whatever we do.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like you you serve as an alternate for a a period of time and then you move into a voting seat and by that point you've um you've learned a lot and you actually get to vote sometimes in your very first meeting as an alternate if one or two people are gone. Um, so it's it's an active uh role, yeah, right from the start. Jay, any comments on that, moving Cindy to voting?
No comment.
Okay. If somebody wants to make that motion, I would say let's get that.
I make the motion to move Cindy to voting.
Second.
Great. We have a motion by Christina and a second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. So now I think what might help is out of the five great candidates that we just heard from, uh, who stands out to you uh as maybe most qualified or or a perspective that's most needed on the board? Um, for that alternate member, this is for the longest term, so this one goes till twenty twenty eight, so it's sort of a full term. Anybody want to start with somebody that kind of stands out to you? I think we'll just discuss it a little bit and then we can make a motion.
Can I just quickly ask what our breakdown is right now in terms of laypeople versus architects versus planners versus?
Four design, four design professionals and three laypeople.
And is, okay, okay.
And those design professionals, I think, are all architects.
Or engineers.
Engineer. Engineer, architect, architect, architect. Okay, yep.
I believe one of those is a landscape architect.
Landscape architect.
Landscape, okay, okay. So that's a pretty good spread of um different design professionals.
I'd like to just take a moment, just I because I didn't know, I don't know exactly where this fit in and I didn't want to ask sort of leading questions, but I did, I just want to want to point out that I did, I did work closely with Candace and on a number of occasions and can just really speak to her thoroughness. Um, and her, her, her balance, her sense of balance and forethought and calm, calm demeanor. Um, and I think in in cases where we we were allied on and things, uh, she was certainly, you know, the cooler, the cooler, the cooler head at times. Um, and and I think that that's not easy in in situations that are that are often very um contentious. Um, and I think that 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 we'd be fooling ourselves if we didn't acknowledge that some of these things are are pretty contentious, whether or not that there's a a community or public that's necessarily listening in on the meetings. Um, they are, they do require a fair bit of of real level-headedness, um, and an ability to to ask, ask some hard questions, um, and keep good notes. And I just wanted to to make, you know, to 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 speak to that since I do have that that particular knowledge. And and leave it there at the moment, but but she's certainly one of the two folks I would, I would, of these great candidates that I would support. And and I think, I don't think any of the uh design professionals, do we have any female design professionals in on the board?
Any, any what, sorry?
Any female design professionals?
Is Cindy?
Okay, all, so all the the female membership is this lady. Okay, I think that I think that would provide a a certain certain sets of balance.
And that attachment in our package, as everybody knows, this is contact list, that has them all listed out, so if you want to look at it, totally fine to ask, but just if anybody wants to look at it. Um, other thoughts on uh who stood out from the the pack for you? And Jay, you're part of this discussion too.
Yep, I'll just say that I think Jesse stands out um as someone who is in the community and offers sort of a different perspective, but also a relation. It's related in some way to what P and Z does and um I just think that helps. Not a designer or an architect, but a different perspective.
On that note, I was going to say the two people who stand out to me are Jesse Garcia and and Annie, Annie Hay. Um, just because of their background, I feel like a great board, um, you bring in different skills. I like the financial bookkeeping skills, I value that in a board and also um the water safety skills from Jesse, I I also value that on the board. So I wanted to say that to those two.
Other thoughts? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I don't know, I guess I I do think that in this situation, I feel like having one layperson and one professional. Um, I I really kind of um like that balance, bringing up bringing two more people on board. Personally, I think that uh I think Jesse would be a great fit, uh, layperson and then also he 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 does it, he's great at presenting and, you know, he has, he's a very vocal person that I think would be a good addition to our group currently. Um, and then as for professional, I honestly, it's, uh, I really like both Mitch and Franco. I think they're both a great addition. We don't technically have a planner um on on the commission, so you know, it is.
Jared's making faces.
The one who gets to vote.
On the commission. You're the town planner. But no, I mean, I just so that we're not having a repetition of a architect or, um, you know, it just, it just seems like a good balance in addition to the team.
Okay. Other thoughts? Who stood out to you, Erica?
Um, you guys are all awesome. Thank you all for applying. Uh, I have stars by all your names. But I um have extra stars. I I'm kind of, I'm leaning towards um Candace and Jesse as my two. Um, partly for bringing the uh kind of professional a little bit different than what's already on the board. Um, and then uh Jesse with his professional experience that's related, like like it's already been said. Um, been in the community for a long time, has applied a couple of times, both of them have, so I think that says a lot and um has a, yeah, I guess I'll just leave it at at that. That's where I've landed, but I'm open to other ideas.
Okay. Chris, any thoughts who's standing out to you?
Oh, my God. Um. Uh, wow, I'm just really impressed with all of you. Um. I I I don't know if I've gotten there yet. I um, I, I, yeah, um.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So it's optional to weigh in right now. Um, I mean, I would agree, I think Jesse really stands out um with his experience, the fact that he's even worked for the town before, he's worked for other municipality or in in firefighting around the valley. Um, and has been here for quite a while. Um. My other one is Mitch. Uh, it's hard for me to pass up somebody with that much experience as a planner and who sat in the applicant seat um that much and really understands and to be on the other side of that um process. So we can continue to discuss or somebody can make a motion and I would recommend breaking these up and making first a motion just for the um the long-term member, the first alternate.
I would move to appoint Jesse Garcia as an alternate member with a term expiring on May thirty first, twenty twenty eight to the P and Z commission. Just put that out there.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion before we vote on that one? Okay.
I thought Jesse's was, Jesse made a great presentation and was really, was really the the most eloquent and and most well-stated. Really clearly impressive candidate.
Great. Uh, all in favor of uh Jesse as alternate member number one, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that was a yes. Um, motion passes unanimously. And what about uh alternate member number two?
I'm just gonna throw out that um I think we need another woman on the board. Only two now and I just think we need to take that into consideration.
You can make a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll move that we've uh we're all nominate Candace for the uh second alternate position.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ross to appoint Candace to the second alternate position and that was seconded by Erica. Any discussion before we vote on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to Cindy and Jesse and Candace and thank you again. This is really tough when we have more uh really qualified people than we have spots. I know it can be hard if you've come in here a couple of times and not gotten appointed. I think we just appointed two people who had applied before. Um, but there wasn't room to appoint all three people who've applied before, so um we have a lot of other boards and commissions. Uh, Jessica or Lauren or somebody else in Town Hall can help you identify those and and it's rare that we have this many applicants for one thing, so thank you very much.
I I just want to echo what Ben said. It's so impressive, the quality of the people who apply for these boards. And P and Z in general, we've done this a couple of times and we're always in the same, like, we can't lose. These are all, you guys are amazing. And it's just a testament to Carbondale, we have this quality of professionals who want to be part of helping to improve our gown and really, really appreciate you and echo what Ben said, please reapply when we have an opening. It sometimes takes a little time, but you you guys are really special and I really appreciate you spending time and talking to us and sharing your thoughts.
I just also quickly say the same thing. Um, I've been in the reapply position before. I know how that feels. Um, if you want to serve the town of Carbondale in some capacity, don't give up. There's a place for you somewhere.
All right. Thanks, everybody. With that, let's take a short break. Um, we've got two pretty big items ahead of us and uh it's almost eight o'clock, so let's take about a
So we are pretty well set to start our Downtowner pilot program on July 1st to run for a six month period. This is sort of a multi-pronged memo, but the agreement that's before you for approval is just our acceptance of that grant. The grant agreement from RFTA. It is, there's absolutely nothing surprising about it. Just talks about, you know, how we will pay Downtowner, and then we will bill RFTA for reimbursement for that six months. The only things that I changed on it were there's were some dates in there that only applied for annual, and this is just a six month pilot. So the second piece of this memo is about our applications, which are, which will be done in less than 10 days, I hope, for our third year of WeCycle first last mile funding from RFTA and our second year, even though we will only have had six months, but our second year of Downtowner funding. Where we don't really know what the board is gonna decide with regard to going forward and making this more of a permanent program instead of a pilot. We can't really wait to determine that before we apply for that 50% funding from RFTA. The last, correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, but the last quote that we got, and I'm gonna get a more accurate one for next year, for a full year program was approximately $700,000 for the year, of which RFTA would pay 50%. But that would leave, you know, $350,000 for the town of Carbondale to be able to come up with. The grant applications for the first last mile funding are due on June 21st. We won't even have started our pilot program by June 21st. So my hope and plan is that the board is fine with us going after that that funding from first last mile account at RFTA. Hopefully, they will grant that. It will be set aside, and then we will spend July, August, and probably September gathering data about what Carbondale wants from the Downtowner. Is it successful? What's the usage? You know, what's this worth to the Carbondale residents? And then if the board decides not to go forward in 2025 with the program, then we will just not sign the grant agreement with RFTA, and RFTA will just hang on to that, whatever money they granted us. So we really don't have anything to lose there except a little bit of somersaulting at the very beginning with regard to the timeframes.
Okay, thank you. This is a little bit complicated. To be totally clear, the first motion, once we get there, will just be to approve the grant agreement for the this year, which we've already got the money. We're launching it in a few short weeks. And then the second one is to apply for next year's funding for both WeCycle and Downtowner before we've even launched our Downtowner program. And then we can decide later in our budget process if we want to commit to our half of that. And if not, then we'll just tell RFTA, thanks, Ben, and thanks. So pretty low risk, but good opportunity to ask questions and make sure we're all on the same page as far as where we are. So what questions do we have? Or comments?
I have a question that just dawned on me that I don't remember seeing in here. The Downtowner, just because I haven't been a part of the process yet, can anyone under the age of 18 ride in it without an adult?
Jared, is it 12? Is this, is the bottom age 12? I think it's 12 and up, with no adult. We will not be picking people up or dropping them off at school.
I was just thinking about how many kids ride the WeCycle bikes and take advantage of that program, so.
And well, we have great experience. Basalt has been doing this for two years. So they've had great success with younger kids, older kids, everybody in between. It's, yeah, we'll just have to prove the concept over the next six months, but I think it's gonna be well used.
Cool.
Other questions, comments? Okay.
Can I make a comment about the name?
Yeah.
Real quickly. You, we've been having separate conversations with a valleywide group of municipalities plus RFTA about a common application for microtransit throughout the valley and what that would be called. And do we all name our microtransit service a particular name? You know, Ride Roaring Fork or get whatever it is. These conversations have been going on for a few months. There is absolutely no consistency from location to location about what this should look like. So where that has been left so far is they're working on a name, a common name for an app under which each town's microtransit will be listed under its name, Snowmass Village Shuttle? Village Shuttle, something. Aspen is using Aspen Downtowner, but they're talking about changing it. Basalt is called Basalt Connect. Nobody wants to rebrand. We went round and round about, what should we call this service? And God, Jared and I felt pretty strongly that Carbondale's gonna want it to be Carbondale centric. However, this is a pilot program, so Downtowner is leasing vehicles. They're not buying vehicles for us. They're gonna do very, very simple signage because they don't want to spend all this money on fancy wraps and logos and all of those kinds of things for a program that they don't know is going to continue. So we are just going to use the Downtowner name for the pilot. However, if the board decides to go forward, we will probably initiate a public outreach process to come up with a name that can be a more permanent name for Carbondale's microtransit. And what that will look like, I don't know, but that's, that's why we just were using the Downtowner logo with their name, six month pilot. And then we'll figure out whether this is going forward before we make any other changes.
I don't have much, I don't have much problem with with the name at the moment, but, but to the extent that we're paying a lot of money. Is, and I know there were, there were some startup costs in there. If, if this, if it's a hidden shuttle, I mean, I think it's important for, well, I, I think it's, it's important that there is a fair bit of marketing and that we have, that we, that we spread the word as much as possible. And I know maybe we don't do big wraps, but at the same time, there's nothing better to advertise a shuttle than a shuttle that's very clearly a shuttle that screams, we are a shuttle.
They will be vans and they will be clearly marked. And I don't know, I know that Ben got a postcard. In the mail, did you get a postcard? Some people have gotten them and some people haven't. And I know that Downtowner is like folding that out. There's also a press release going out. There'll be an ad in the paper. Jared and I are meeting with his sober son to be interviewed tomorrow. There's going to be a lot of outreach. And I frankly was very pleased when Nikki and Sue came to me with age friendly Carbondale and said, we will go to senior housing and we will sit down with people and help them put the app on their phone and
That's great.
what have you. So I think it will be well received and well, well known.
Okay, sounds, sounds good.
But that answers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did, yeah. I mean, I wouldn't rule out a wrapper, big, big signage on the vehicles themselves because that's the easiest way.
There will be. It just won't be anything specific to Carbondale yet.
Other thoughts or questions?
I mean, I would just add that I don't feel like it would need to be a Carbondale centric name. And if we need to be the leaders on, hey, everybody, we're just gonna call it the same thing, I'm fine with that. Like I, if, you know, so I just wanted to throw that out. I don't know if we would need to spend resources on that.
Well, and the problem is Basalt's not changing their names. Snowmass isn't changing, like, nobody else wants to
Yeah.
all have the same name, so.
I'm not hung up.
To add to that, we're, we're, we're trying to make this a regional project, not just, everybody's on their own. And we're gonna need to convince other people.
Ways do.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Christina, did you have something?
I was just gonna make sure the marketing is gonna be bilingual.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. And the app is bilingual as well.
Chris, any questions or comments on this proposal?
No, sounds good to me. I guess I would say that sounds fine in terms of the branding or whatever for now. I think if we are going, if, if, if we can't get it to be a regional thing, I don't think that's the end of the world, especially if we can. But for me, it's just the mechanics of having the app be one app and just not putting three people through a nightmare of downloading multiple apps onto their phone because we all went through the nightmare of QR code menus at restaurants. I think just drives people crazy, actually. People actually don't like using their phones that much or stuff often. But I think if it's on there and it's useful, then that's fine. And then if I think we are going Carbondale, I think a contest or something could be a fun way to get, you know, people engaged with it. If we had a, you know, a name contest and a, and then maybe a rap design contest, I don't know. But, or I don't know if it's the same thing, but that could be a fun way to, you know, we, the event we put things out for. I know the environmental board has put out things for like Danley Island Day, and we've gotten huge numbers of really amazing submissions and similarly for the Mountain Fair and whatnot. So I don't think there's any lack of potential creativity there if we do want to go our own way, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, one quick thing about having it be the same app, unfortunately, the Downtowner, and this may change for WeCycle as well. Right now, you can access RFTA bus routes and WeCycle information on the transit app. This will not be integrated into the transit app at this point, unfortunately. That may or may not come in the future. I don't know if Jared, do you want to add anything to that? But that has been part of our conversation. It's like, can't we get them all integrated into one, one single app?
Yeah, so it would be a lightweight integration where it would show up similar to Uber or Lyft, but it would send you to the third party app or a website versus WeCycle, which is fully integrated transit app, and you can literally get your code right from the app. So just throwing that out.
Okay, it sounds like we have support, so I think we can move toward a motion. I would just make one comment, which is that I think our vision of this that we've discussed so far has been a regionally connected first last mile solution where you can, you know, ideally ultimately all be in the same app with the same branding. Those things I think can work themselves out over time. But that anywhere in the Roaring Fork Valley that there's RFTA BRT service, there's also WeCycle service, and there's also microtransit service. And it's super easy, and everybody knows how to use it, and you hop on in one place, you hop off in another, and you know that it's gonna be there for you. So I just think we need to keep our eye on that as the big goal and use our representation on the RFTA board to continue to advocate for this ultimately being folded into what RFTA does. That RFTA is a regional service provider with first and last mile accessibility. I think what we have to be careful about is, like, I know in Basalt, they, they shuttle all the kids around. But this is not primarily a shuttle kids around service and for age friendly. It's to shuttle people around who have mobility challenge. It can do those things, but its primary purpose and the part where we're gonna have regional support for it and external funding for it is getting people to and from the park and ride. And everything else will probably be on us long term. So I just think we have to keep that in mind as this evolves and as we manage expectations and experience it and all that. So, you know, if we want to be committed to long term, like, what's our share of $700,000? I think the part that's not getting people to and from the park and ride will always be our responsibility. Nobody else is ever gonna pay that, just like the shuttles around Snowmass and Glenwood and Aspen. Those are all municipal. So the, the more of it that's oriented toward, and the more we think about it as oriented toward getting people to and from RFTA, the more that we'll have, I think, regional support. So those are all things that'll just play out over time, but I just wanted to sort of
That's, that's a really good point. And also, you know, at the risk of being a victim of our own success, I suspect that this is going to be wildly successful. I don't know how we would compare it with WeCycle, but if you don't already know, the WeCycle station at the BRT has doubled in size, and we have had WeCycle for a year.
Yeah.
Because of demand. So, you know, it's, it's a good problem to have, but it is gonna take some problem solving.
Okay, but you might like to make these two motions, or I guess we need to make them separate. So one at a time.
I'll move to approve the pilot program grant agreement for Carbondale microtransit service between the town of Carbondale and the Roaring Fork Transportation Authority and to authorize the town manager to execute the corresponding documents. Second.
Motion by Jess, second by Erica, beat you to it. Chris, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have another motion?
I'll move to approve FLMM grant applications to Rafta for WeCycle bike share in Downtowner, Downtowner microtransit for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
All right. Motion by Jess, second by Erica.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. We look forward to that service. And thanks again for staff and all the work that's gone into getting it to this point.
Can I just make a comment? Sorry. I know, just hearing that, that, that Cal mentioned the the Rafta thing, I just want to reiterate as you go into that, you know, retreat meeting is just continually thinking about how do you increase capacity on the trunk line itself? Cause there, I mean, this past, I thought there were pretty serious overcrowding issues occasionally on buses and so that, you know, could be a continuing part of the puzzle as well is trying to figure out how to increase bus capacity and that kind of stuff as well.
Agreed.
All right. Hopefully that 40 unit housing that they're going to open will help recruit and retain some drivers because that's coming up in a few months. Okay. Community request grant discussion. So Jessica, you want to lead us off on this? I think Chris had encouraged us to talk about, you know, looking at these requirements. And Jessica prepared a, a memo on this with basically a recommendation that we set aside some time to discuss all this, but not implement any changes immediately. And I think where we want to go tonight is to be determined, but Jessica, why don't you tee that up for us, please?
Yeah, you hit it on the head, Mayor. So I provided a background in there for our three new trustees who have never been through a grant process. I've only been through one myself and I can tell you it was horrendously tedious, being the administrator of that. So I agree that something needs to change in the grant process, but I'd hate to ask for half the board's opinion when half the board doesn't have experience doing that. And due to scheduling purposes this year, the grant application is going to come out at the very end of July rather than mid-August, like it has come out in years past. I have made some changes to the application process. I am working on a more like a Google form type application where all of the answers will be downloaded into a spreadsheet, which would be a lot easier, I think, for you guys to dig through rather than piece of paper by piece of paper as it was before I got here and then online thousands of pieces of PDFs. So currently applicants are asked to categorize themselves into one of eight categories, which includes what I assume were the board's priorities when this program started. Those categories don't really align with anything in our allocation process. And I don't know if the board, I don't know why the categories are there. I can't find information on that. I don't know if you guys want to keep that or if you want to use those categories to maybe allocate a set amount of funds to each category. There's so many ways we could break it down. The big thing that I noticed that I pointed out in the memo is that the recreation fund, which comes from or the recreation specific nonprofits that receive grants out of this cycle are, they come from the recreation fund specifically, and some of those applicants have a history and of asking for more than the $5,000 limit that's stated and receiving more than the $5,000 limit. Specifically Five Points, Eric Brenlinger was saying that it's kind of a pass through and it creates a easier bookkeeping method. That's remains to be seen. I don't, I don't understand all of that. And I think if those recreation specific nonprofits are looking for recreation specific funds, I think it makes sense to have a separate set of guidelines for those. And historically, those have been special events, like the farmer's market and Five Points, like I mentioned. So that's kind of the, the big thing that I saw aside from the categories. Couple other things is the allocation process, I feel like could be changed rather than each trustee giving a set dollar amount. Maybe we could have a set amount of grants or grants in $500 increments. Just to create a little bit of bookkeeping fairness. Some of the grant amounts like last year were like 4,277. Like, could that just be 5,000? Or 4,500, just to keep numbers nice and round. That's just my preference. So with those changes, I, you know, I am happy to add data points to our current application to collect data for you guys to see what are these nonprofits looking for or where are they actually headquartered? Cause as of right now, for the past 10 years, we've only asked what their mailing address is. And I don't think, Chris, that that's, that was your intention when you wanted to say that or wanted to give nonprofits headquartered in Carbondale priority and so.
And I backed off opinion anyway, so.
Okay. Can you share that with us?
Yeah, I had a good conversation with Erica about it. I, I mean, I originally just thought, yeah, we have a lot of people in the Third Street Center and stuff. And it seemed like, I guess, I, I think maybe my larger concern was more about just the a sort of sense of like the same pressures of inflation that have been going on with a lot of things and us still just being stuck under $5,000. But I, I really appreciate the staff memo and I totally support giving ourselves time. I think it's a fine thing for us to maybe put a little bit of time in the retreat into if we want to, I don't know. But maybe if we want to go through the whole process, that's, that makes sense as well. But yeah, I just really appreciate the memo and yeah, I think just for me, yeah, there would just seem to be, I, I guess they were, I guess I, I will, I'll just share my like sort of case study just seems to be the having been on the other side of the process and having been on the KDNK board in the past. You know, that number was higher and then this $5,000 thing kind of came in as a equalizing factor for that. And the grant got cut almost in half that year for the town. And it was, you know, it was at a moment when the Aspen Public Radio was getting $100,000 or something from the city of Aspen. And KDNK was now getting more money from the city of Aspen than the city of Carbondale. And the context seemed to be there was, and then I guess similarly, there was a, you know, there's a lot of ad buying going on with the, with the Soaper Sun, but I don't, to my knowledge, none with KDNK. And, or very little. And so I, I sort of was feeling like the, just in that specific case, it just seemed like sort of a redhead stepchild of, of getting passed over by, by other groups and then seeing a lot of recreation related things. There's sort of just being a lot of these kind of workarounds for certain groups and stuff that, that didn't, didn't seem to be an evil, even playing field exactly to me. So, but I think it is definitely like a complicated, very complicated subject and bears more discussion. And I really think the like technological improvements could be a huge, take some of the burden off of the staff on it. But that's sort of where I am now. I, I yeah, I just felt like there are some organizations in town that are, that are, do a lot of sort of work for us in the same way that Clear or the Chamber or other, other groups sort of are our essentially an extension of our what we're offering oftentimes. So.
Thanks, Chris. Lauren.
I just wanted to, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about it on the staff in the last couple of weeks since the last meeting. But in thinking about what Chris originally suggested was as far as, you know, nonprofits that are headquartered in Carbondale or what have you, I would be very interested as we go through this process in figuring out what the board would like to use as priorities. Whether that's, you know, how do we define small local nonprofit? Is that an address? Is that, how do they serve Carbondale's population and at what level? You know, what kinds of data points the board really wants to see in order to figure out how to set those priorities? And maybe design the process around that.
And so you're saying do that after this round though?
Yes.
I'll just, I want to clarify a little bit what Chris was saying. I didn't like call him and tell him to back off. But I understood what he was requesting, but I also wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, there's some entities that we give funding to that I think is absolutely essential. And that's like, what stands out to me is River Bridge Regional Center and like Advocate Safe House. You know, they both help victims in a really meaningful way. Victims of sexual abuse, victims of domestic violence. And I wouldn't expect them, I wouldn't want them to be in a position where they're receiving less from us because they're arbitrarily located in Glenwood when they're really an essential service, even if they only serve one Carbondale resident in a year. So I'm also less interested in those kinds of necessarily metrics for like, how many kids have they served? But it's more like we're helping fund an essential service that some of our citizens may or may not need at some point. And so I didn't want that to be lumped into this, you know, kind of a little bit arbitrary kind of cutoff of having to be located in our town. But I did, I was talking to Chris and as I recall, when I was, we were first doing this, we didn't have a cap. We kind of had a guidance. So it's not like we have a policy that says this is only 5,000. We just kind of were noticing that we were only ever giving at most entities 5,000, but then we would have some come in and ask for 15. So it was more, it was meant to come off as more like guidance for, it started left, I think, as guidance. And then it was like, okay, now it's a cap. So that's something we could adjust where we could say in the language, because you'll have also a really easy grant application, where it's like, we just give people a heads up and say, most grants are less than, or 5,000 or less. But some might, we might consider more or something like that and give ourselves a little flexibility when we're filling out that spreadsheet if we want to. If that would help alleviate some of that. A couple of other just comments that I, I would be okay with simplifying the application. I feel like a lot of entities put a ton of work to get awarded like $1,200. And as somebody who's worked in nonprofits and applied for grants and we kind of give the same entities money every year that I would, I feel, and I rarely review like every detailed kind of budget thing that they provide. So I don't have it in front of me of everything that we ask for, but I'd be really open, Jessica, to like simplifying that if others are on board and making that a little bit easier. Cause really what I think a lot of people use these grants for is to say, I mean, obviously fund essential services, but to say that like the town of Carbondale is giving us money, hey, look, big funder. We get support from the town of Carbondale. And so I just want to acknowledge that I don't feel like all of that application work is necessarily worth the amounts that people give. So I'd be okay with simplifying that, the rounding up or down, I'd be fine with that, although we're going to negotiate that. And then I also don't know, I think the categories helped me understand and remember what those businesses, those entities do. But you're right. I've, I remember wondering at the beginning, like, oh wait, am I only allowed to give a certain amount in this category? Or, and struggling with that, but I don't have a solution for that right now. So I just wanted to share some of that.
I'm going to try to move us forward because our next discussion is, is a really big one. Staff recommendation here is that we basically leave it alone for now. I'm not hearing any major changes required, but I'm also hearing some flexibility for staff to come back with an application that's simplified. I would agree with Erica. I don't think, like, we get like 80 applications and each one has, I mean, there's on the, yeah, there's.
There's like five appendices.
Yeah. And like 15 questions or 10 questions.
And we're talking about $100,000.
Yeah, a total to distribute amongst all those groups. So I, I think we would be open to you coming back to us with a simplified list of questions that, you know, I think between you two and checking in with a couple of us, we could probably figure out what is the really key info. And I think how are you serving Carbondale residents directly seems to be a key part of it. But there's a lot of other stuff that, that might be superfluous. As far as the limits, so really quick history, before any of us were on this board, there was a moment in time where the night of grant applications was this marathon session where everybody came in and presented. And so the previous board to us put in place this process where you get a spreadsheet and you all do that on your own and you come together and you're like, okay, we're, we're good. And it's worked really well. So I think that part is working well for us. And then Erica is correct that we put these guidelines in there to say, and I've got the application page open. It says, large regional nonprofits seeking the town's partnership slash letter of support may request up to 500. Small local nonprofits may request up to 5,000. And that was to try to kind of split that out and allow us some flexibility to kind of go small for some where we're not going to have a big impact. But they want to say the town supports us and bigger to the local groups, like some that Chris mentioned, where they're really extending what, and Erica mentioned, where they're extending what we can do. So I'm inclined to stick with that for now, go through this and then let's schedule it almost like right after we do this. Cause we kind of have this amnesia every year where we, we always want to fix it. And then we wait six months and we're like, oh, it's too late to fix it. So that's, that's what I would recommend to keep us moving forward.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay. I love that.
Can I suggest that we, we do keep a cap on there? I know like there were a couple that were 10,000 and I think that those are the ones that kind of, like, what do they know that, that someone else doesn't know? And I, I would, I don't see, I, I mean, I don't see why we would need to allow or permit that.
Yeah, I think the only reasons have been from that part, the recreation fund, there's like a bigger, there's a chunk of money there and there's only a few applicants for it. So we sort of expand them to fit the, the need. But I think staff could bring us back something on that because I agree with the idea of a cap. I think it, once it becomes flexible, it becomes really arbitrary.
Okay.
Okay. Is that enough direction for you?
Yes.
Simplified application, same caps. That's about it. Leaving the categories for now and then we'll see how it worked and going ahead and scheduling something for us right after we do it to review it.
Perfect. I can do that. Thanks, guys.
All right. Well, thanks for initiating that discussion, Chris. And then being open to say, and maybe we don't need to make that exact change. Okay. So biggest, big topic of the night really is community housing guidelines update. I checked in with Jared and Lauren on this today. Mark, I think has some updates as well. I know that there's some community members here specifically interested in this. So Jared, why don't you set the stage for us? Let's let Mark give an update. And then let's, let's hone in on exactly what feedback we need to give tonight. I, I think what we're not going to do is make a bunch of big decisions in the next 30 minutes that really change the program. But we need to give some guidance so that we can keep this moving forward.
So I'll, I'll try to briefly summarize the report. So bear with me. But this kind of started, this conversation started with the trustees back in February 2024. There was a work session with Garfield County Housing Authority. And we really wanted to discuss kind of pinch points within the existing program, updates that might be able to be addressed as well as kind of one topic that staff surfaced, which we've received some recent requests for, which were additions to affordable housing units. And so when we kind of looked through or at that meeting, the trustees directed staff to prepare some updates, look at these topics, come back with some additional information for some additional dialogue. And so that's where we're at tonight. When looking at these regulations, we, we kind of focus in on three of the regional organizations kind of doing some, some heavy work within affordable housing, APCHA, Aspen, Picken County Housing Authority, Eagle County and Picken County, just to kind of view the, the range of options. And so as you see in, in the staff memo, we kind of set up some of the recommendations to say, what are the issues? What are each of these other organizations? How do they address this issue? And then how the staff recommend, maybe moving forward or what type of policy conversations are we looking for from the trustees? We've included a draft community housing guideline update. I do want to state that that hasn't been reviewed by legal. So part of what we're hoping for is direction and then, you know, some more kind of rolling up the sleeves and, and working on this. We did include in that some of these minor changes and I outlined that in the staff report. We did include in that some of these minor changes and I outlined that in the staff report. And then we kind of got into some of the larger discussion topics and key discussion points. And, and I'll try to very briefly summarize each one. First and foremost, housing application lottery placements. Over the years, Garfield County identified that we've had a lot of households have been submitted as multiple applications. And they haven't always included all adults in their households on their applications. And really the goal there was to really increase chances for placing high in the lottery or placing first overall in the lottery to increase your chances of purchasing the unit. And so we looked at APCHA, we looked at D-2 County. Both of their guidelines limit an individual to applying in a single household. And require that all household members are listed. Failure to kind of comply with either of those can be, can, can make your application disqualified for placement in the lottery. And so, you know, we thought that was one way of kind of helping give the housing authority a little more teeth to say, you didn't comply. Unfortunately, you don't qualify. Please clean this up and reapply in the future. Another thing the town could consider is something that both of those organizations do, which would be expanding the lottery selection criteria. Currently we just say, you're in town, you're in priority one, you're out of town, you're in priority two. Each of these other organizations have a lot of other factors such as household size, unit size, how long you've been in the community or in the organization's geographical defined area. Some other things and some other factors that really help right-size applicants with the units. And so that could be something that the, that we look at doing is kind of creating a more sophisticated application and lottery process. The next issue is renting of rooms or renting the entire unit without receiving approval. Our guidelines do require that, but they really are, are very silent on that or there, there isn't a lot of information. And so we kind of looked at the other policies and we felt APCHA's policy was maybe a very thorough process where we can allow roommate rentals with prior approval. We can ensure tenants meet qualifications. And we can require approval of those leases that would make, that would help Garfield County Housing ensure that the rental rate meets what the deed restriction sets forth. In addition, APCHA has a fine schedule for whole hook to violations. One is, it is kind of a progressive fine schedule for renting your room without prior approval. Could be something that we consider, just throw that out for discussion. Short-term rentals, very simply, our codes do not permit short-term rentals, indeed restricted housing. We've included language in the draft guideline update that reinforces that. But kind of along that previous conversation, fines could be included in some sort of enforcement mechanism if the town so chooses. Maintaining eligibility and requalification. So right now we don't have this. When we looked at other, e- each of the other three, they all require continued essential recertification. In picking counties, you have to be employee once you lose your employment with picking county. You no longer qualify and they set forth the procedures to sell your home. With APCHA and Eagle County, they require a one or two-year recertification. But really what they focus on is employment residency and real property ownership. So for the AMI units, income restricted units, they aren't necessarily telling you that you need to come and show your income and make sure that you still qualify for that 80, 100, 120% AMI unit. But that you do work for a local employer, you do live there as your primary residence and you kind of meet some of those requirements. And that could be something that we look at, including to ensure that people living there are continually qualified. Another issue that has come up is ownership of other properties. So over the years, we've had some select instances where Garfield County has either come across at the time or after a sale of a property being owned sometime in a trust or LLC, and some of those can complicate the approval process. When looking at both APCHA and Eagle Counties programs, they both specifically prohibit ownership of units within a trust. Eagle County kind of goes a step further and says, we recognize there might be some very unique cases where a trust is warranted. And so they have this kind of special review process that can handle some of those unique circumstances. And so we felt that was a, a topic worth discussing and a policy direction that you all could weigh in on. And then I think the big thing that really kicked this off is capital improvements and additions to units. And so what we've included in the staff memo is our current regulations, how they're set up. You know, they could be viewed as disincentivizing homeowners from making improvements because they all contain a financial cap of what you can get added to your maximum sale price. And that financial cap is either 10% or 20%, depending upon each individual's deed restriction. And that's based on your either your initial purchase price or your current maximum sale price at the time you do the improvements. And that's again, dependent upon each individual deed restriction. So we heard at the February meeting that you all were interested in kind of digging into this a little bit more and seeing what pathways could be prepared. And so we kind of created some scenarios for you all and we used a hypothetical home of $400,000 and a hypothetical improvement of $160,000. And showed in the table in the staff memo, how that price would be impacted, how that sale price would be impacted in five to 10 years, assuming a standard 4% appreciation, which is very common for the majority of our deed restrictions. That's the minimum appreciation and realistically the appreciation that most of these units have seen over the last 11 years of this program being implemented. And so the scenarios are really scenario one, the existing regulations, which are to permit the additions under our current capital improvement limits, which is 10 or 20%. So I just included those as, as kind of one A or one B. Option two is this partial value option. And kind of the intent behind that was to look at a, look at a, an option or a scenario where the town and the property owner kind of partners in improvements, very similar to how the town and developers are partners in handling the costs of the initial deed restriction, the initial reduction in sale price. And so for argument's sake, we said, you know, we could consider maybe a 50% addition. And unfortunately the scenario, the numbers didn't change because 50% in the scenario just happened to be the 20% scenario of option one B. So I apologize for that. Bad math on my behalf, but the third option is partial value B. And that's essentially the route that Eagle County has pursued. And that's to break these improvements up into two categories, kind of structural elements. You know, essentially those things behind drywall and then fixtures and finishes. And Eagle County essentially says the structural elements can be added to the base value of the property at full value. And then those fixtures and finishes and how Eagle County describes that is things like carpet and tubs and toilets and cabinets and mirrors and light fixtures and doors and all those things. Those get put into this other category, which into two subcategories, but basically depreciated a straight line depreciation over five or 20 years. And then the fourth scenario that we kind of included for argument's sake is what full value? The entire value of the improvement being added to the sale price of the home, what that would look like. And we included in there that that's not a, a recommended scenario by staff, just due to how quickly that grows the property out of the affordability range. Kind of within these different scenarios, I, I think it's also important to, to remember that all three of the other organizations that we looked at, they all depreciate capital improvements according to some schedule. Whereas Town of Carbondale doesn't do any depreciation of capital improvements. And so very simply what that means is over time, a capital improvement to a Carbondale housing unit is going to continue to grow in value. Those capital improvements that are peer organizations, if you will, will kind of depreciate down to zero and won't have as long-term lasting impact on the price or the affordability of a home. Another thing to consider is as these homes rise in value over time, there's likely going to be some point in time where they will no longer be affordable, whether that's AMI or one of the hybrid ROs. And at some point, I assume a future board of trustees will have to make some decision about how to address affordability. And so I want to make sure that was abundantly clear that that is going to likely happen in every scenario. Just how quickly we get to that point is, is likely going to depend on how we deal with these big ticket items that could be added, such as additions to a deed restricted housing unit. I included in the staff memo, a, a few kind of questions that I think are worth considering on those high-level policy conversations and then one thing that kind of came up, Mark and I met yesterday afternoon. We kind of looked at this and you know, I think we reread some of the deed restrictions and and Mark, feel free to correct me if I misrepresent this, but there's some maybe bigger issues at play. Some of the deed restrictions that we have don't necessarily reference the housing guidelines. And they're very specific in how they address capital improvements. And so some of the options that we potentially are looking for with these scenarios, they might have, they might not be able to be applied immediately. And there might be some other avenues that we would have to consider, such as creating a new deed restriction that somebody could voluntarily replace their existing deed restriction with to gain some benefit or something like that. And so we still kind of need to figure that out, but I at least wanted to give you guys that update as well. And so just to summarize, I think, you know, we're recommending really some, some discussion points, some policy direction from you all so that we can go back, work on this a little bit more and maybe come back with some, some additional information or a better strike through of the housing guidelines.
Okay. Thank you. Lot to chew on there. Mark, do you have any other updates for us?
Not really. I think it's mostly a policy discussion, but if you have any questions about what Jared just said and anything else, I'd be happy to weigh in. But I think it's largely just in need of some policy discussion, mostly forward-looking because some of the due restrictions released are what they are. Maybe there'll be opportunities for us to replace them, it becomes attractive to both sides, but some of them are.
Okay. I think that's a really important note that I just learned today. And it sounds like you both just learned yesterday that there's a limit to the impact, especially on kind of the the highest impact part of this is the last part. And it's why people are here is the part about how much of the value of a addition can the owner recoup in a sale? And just clarify that for us again. So whatever changes we propose or that we go through some process to propose in coming months. You're saying because some of the existing guide, our deed restrictions don't update or don't reference.
It needs to be case by case, you know, because deed restrictions haven't been the same in every project. They vary from year to year, they vary by helper, by attorney, by whether SKECO was involved by, you know, it just, there isn't a one-size-fits-all answer. So I think generally speaking, if I were your shoes, I would consider this to be kind of a forward-looking, future development kind of thing. But there are probably inevitably going to be some deed restrictions that have more flexibility to retroactively apply regulatory changes than others. And we'll just have to consider on a case-by-case basis.
And as far as process, I discussed with Jared a little bit today, I'm with Lauren. Some of the, you know, I, I would acknowledge that like, there's a lot of detail at the board level. We generally get things brought to us as a recommendation that's been thoroughly worked through by some sort of group, whether it's P&amp;Z or staff or, and, and you know, public outreach and whatever. And we don't have that here. I would also acknowledge that, I don't know about Eagle County, but APCHA, they have a whole board, that this is all that they do, right? They don't do everything else. And so we don't have that advantage right now. So.
And they have staff.
And they have staff. And so Garfield County staff simply takes whatever we give them and implements it. Whereas they all have staff that like works on all this and does all this research and all that kind of stuff. So I, I want to acknowledge that it's going to be challenging for us to get into that level of detail at these meetings. And so there's sort of a, an option in here where we could decide which of these we want to decide directly and work through those in a coming meeting probably. And then we could also potentially set up, Jared had suggested sort of a working group that might involve, like I know that the homeowners association that Thompson Coroner in particular has been engaged in these issues and, and has a lot of, you know, scenarios to, to test things off of and that sort of thing. And a lot of expertise. They might want to be involved in something like that. And maybe it's a member of P&amp;Z and staff and maybe a member from this board or something like that. I think especially if the capital additions issue is going to be forward-looking and not apply to current deed restrictions very easily. So with that, let's maybe ask some clarifying questions just for sort of where we are. I want to let people who've been very patiently waiting for the last couple of hours to speak and thank them for their comments that they've submitted to us, both in writing and at previous meetings. And then try to figure out, are there any easy ones that we want to pick off and say, let's move forward with those? And then what kind of process do we want to propose for the thornier issues? So clarifying questions from the board for staff before we hear from the public.
Mark, the model deed restriction, for lack of a better term. We would prepare one based on some of our discussions and then how do we make it available for people to switch?
They probably will, they've always evolved, you know, the, the inclusionary housing ordinance, the original one, I think was approved in 2001, 15% requirement AMI only, different AMI mix than we have today. And those deed restrictions look different. Over time, you know, after 2009 recession, you know, lenders ran into foreclosure problems. And so there was all these changes to try to deal with what happens to a deed restriction foreclosure. And more recently, we've gotten, you know, Garfield County involved and, and there's been gradual evolution in that respect too. I don't think that's going to stop. I think however, if we get to revised updated guidelines, the deed restrictions going forward can, can refer to those and be subject to them. So, so that more so than the ones that were crafted 10 years ago, if that makes sense.
So the deed restriction were to refer to the guidelines. So we're not changing the deed restriction, but we can change the guidelines.
It might be either or both, but they work together. And some of the older documents don't as clearly sync with the guidelines, even that we have now, let alone the ones you might adopt in six months or whatever this is going to end. So it's really just kind of marrying them up.
And, and do we, and this, this part of the Garfield County Housing Authority question. Do we have a spreadsheet of who's got what kind of deed restriction and who has what kind of cap? And who's falling into these different categories?
Yes, we do. And we included a summary of that as attachment C.
Thank you.
To the staff report. And it's, it's a, it's a lot of information and a deed restriction to distill down to a legible spreadsheet. But we do, they do, this is, this the, the unsummarized spreadsheet has all sorts of additional information. And so we do, I think what we don't have is reading kind of a lot of the fine detail of each of those deed restrictions to say this would or this wouldn't apply retroactively, this would or wouldn't apply only if a replacement deed is, is restriction is put in place. So that would be kind of that next level of where it truly would be applied. where it truly would be applicable.
Other clarifying questions for staff before we hear from public?
This might be a dumb question, but are the deed restrictions by that development project? Or they negotiated when those units were? So like, are they different by development or by homeowner?
It, it's, in my experience, this probably isn't a one size fits all answer. It's mostly by development, like the Thompson Corner ones are different than the Cater ones that are different than the Thompson Park ones. You know, um, be, and but that's partially just temp, the time in which they were done. You know, the, when did the project go, get approved, invested?
Okay.
More so than the developer, individualized developer negotiations. But sometimes that comes up. Like in Cleveland Place, we went through all sorts of enforcement, even a big lawsuit over the affordable units in Cleveland Place. So um, so it's, there's a lot of history and um, we can't turn back the clock on everything, but, but I think the it, I think what Jared, I hear Jared saying, I mean, just step on his toes, but is the, tell us what you want going forward. And that may change in a few years too, but at least let's reset what target you want to shoot at. And then we do our best to match the policies, future deed restrictions, and maybe interpret the existing deed restrictions consistent with that, if we can.
Okay.
Great. Any last clarifying questions before, not last, last, but before we hear from people? Okay. Any of you like to speak to us? Now's your chance.
Hello, everyone. Um, I am Michael Stout. This is Nicole Rebek Stout. Uh, we are residents at six twenty-six Bridgewater Place, uh, part of Thompson Corner. We are fortunate residents of our second deed restricted unit. We started off in Keter Grove, um, during which time an addition was made to a sing, single family residence. Um, after that time, we won a lottery for the Thompson Corner unit, which is Rowan Meads House, which is uh, just kind of an interesting fact giving my background uh, and place of employment. Um, before we purchased that place, we went through kind of due diligence to explore the process of doing an addition, knowing that one had happened, um, and worked with our HOA, the county and town staff to really dive into the details of what the interpretations would be and learn that it was feasible. I think also of note is that um, we received approval from our HOA last week that we can move forward. Uh, and they gave us a letter to submit to you guys as well. So that's all, um, you know, just to say that we're really grateful for this conversation and the opportunity to kind of grow in the place where we are. Um, without those opportunities for affordable housing units, we may not be able to be a part of this community in the ways that we have been. And just looking at the memo, I think that the kind of fifty percent partial value felt like a really um, reasonable compromise between us investing in that unit and the affordable housing program, while also seeing that we need to maintain the integrity of the affordable housing program in general. So just wanted to say thank you for the time and considering these things and um, look forward to figuring out how we can resolve that and move forward.
Hi, Nicole Rebek Stout. Um, I just want to provide just a sliver of background on Thompson Corner. I think that was the original affordable housing stock of this town. And so I feel really grateful to be in one of those units. It was um, sort of a pioneering development at the time. Um, the units um, historically were conveyed um, privately. So if you had a small house, you could convey it to your single friend or uh, a couple with a dog. If you had a larger home, you could give it to a family. Um, moving to the lottery system, when we won a two-bedroom house and we're a family of four, we knew that wasn't going to suit us. Um, but we had a lot of confidence that we could get there and make it our forever home if we could build this addition. Um, so that's what we're um, really excited about. And um, I'm, I'm pretty passionate and emotional about it. We're about a year into this process. Um, so I just want to convey that um, um, allowing and supporting us in this is going to um, bring us so much quality of life in a town that we really love. Um, I also want to point out about preserving the price points of the different AMI categories. Our category one condo in Keter Grove sold for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the lowest income community member. We bought our Thompson Corner house category four income level for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So there's really imperfect price points amongst the AMI units currently. Um, we actually feel if we added a significant value to our home, we would still be affordable for a category four owner, um, which we included in the letter in your packet. Um, sort of outlining some assumptions about how that could happen. Um, we also um, um, want to point out um, that the, our lot and a lot of the lots in Thompson Corner are quite small. Ours is twenty, twenty-two hundred square feet. Taken up mo, most of the space by driveway and uh, house footprint. There's no space left in our building envelope for another addition. And there's no space going uh, vertical for another addition. So this is like the one addition that this house can undertake. It's not like a future owner can keep adding bedrooms. It's impossible to, it would be impossible to meet the town code. So this is like the one shot for this house. Um, and so with that, I just encourage a, a generous policy um, that considers both current residents and supporting the existing families here. Um, you know, Michael and I are a family, you're going to hear from Liza. Liza and Dan have a growing family too. Um, these are real people and um, our community and, and we contribute to this community and want to be here for many years to come. We also think that our home, um, we would love to see another family come in after us and really benefit from the work that we did with you to make that really suitable for another family to grow into after us. So um, thank you so much. We are so grateful for the program and this conversation.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Liza Mitchell. Um, I spoke to many of you during the February work session. Um, and for those that are new, welcome. Um, I'm not going to dive into that whole background, but I, I do also live in, I'm living in Keter Grove in a deed restricted unit. Um, and um, um, here primarily to comment on the, on these policy options as well, but we do. Um, we do, we did submit a building permit application. It's, you know, sitting with the town right now and it's, and not getting approved. And that is very frustrating. I don't think it's legal. Um, and um, you know, we've also been in this process for over a year, having done the due diligence. Like um, Nicole and Michael, before we purchased the home of understanding um, that, you know, what our future options there were. We all know that this program has changed by COVID and the way the free market went, these are no longer really ladder houses or entry level houses where you can then step somewhere else. So that's sort of why, um, for those that are new, we are um, also seeking an addition that is allowed in our PUD zoning approval. It says additions can go above the garage. So um, those, these delays have severely impacted us as a family. Um, you know, we did take the step to submit a formal letter to the town, which is something we never thought we would have to do. Um, you know, we thought coming here and working through things and um, reading things clearly, you know, we thought we could work through it. We still are, are still um, there, but but this is impacting people now. And I think that this policy is important and we should walk through it collectively with the community very carefully. It's going to impact people for a long time into the future, as is clear by the deed restrictions that are impacting people now. Um, so I do encourage you, um, just on that building permit, like to direct staff to continue to approve those. Um, we don't see that additions are prohibited in our deed language. And they are approved in our zoning um, PUD approval. So it's a little bit confusing um, why we can't proceed. So that said, um, let's move towards the, my comments on the policy options are general. Um, thank you all for considering that. And, and um, I appreciate Ben's comment that like, this is complex, right? Like this is not something that I'm very familiar with. And I work full time. I have a family, you know, I'm here sweaty and covered in yogurt and solo because I can't afford a babysitter and my husband got home late from work. And just like all of you, like it's hard to be here and make things work. So figuring out like what we can take on and what we can't. Um, I think, you know, from the trustee level is great. Um, I don't, I didn't get into a lot of the nitty gritty details. Um, my husband did send a letter. Um, so I encourage you to sort of look at that. I think he has some um, some valid points on how to calculate the price increases, maybe based on like square footage increase rather than the home base price. You just heard an example of how the home brace price can be kind of wonky. Um, so there may be some alternative ways um, that maybe the other organizations in the area haven't done, but might actually be really appropriate for Carbondale. Um, so I think, yeah, still going into this policy like with, with options open and not, not just narrowing down, but still thinking creatively and bringing in some other expertise might be wise. Um, uh, Dan's letter also um, pointed out just really quickly that that table, um, in interpreting that, I think it's, it's important to note that as you see those prices increase, regardless of which option, it's not just an increase in that two-bedroom home. That should then be compared to the price of a three-bedroom home. And I think when you think about that, it changes a little bit of the affordability. Um, you know, we, our neighbors that bought the two oh six Linden Circle addition, the house that got the addition under a deed restriction, we're psyched to find that house as a family. And they are rooting for us so dearly so that our sons, who are the same age, can like continue to grow up together. Um, so I don't think that there's a lack of people that could benefit from three-bedroom houses under a deed restricted um, program, even at that more generous progressive um, increase in, in sales price. We don't plan to move, but I just think that um, you know, that, that's a comment there. And, and a caveat in Dan's letter to look at that table seven um, a little more closely. Um, so now my comments on the policy options, like I said, they're pretty general. Um, thank you to the trustees for your general support um, of additions. I think it acknowledges the um, humans that live in those places. And I appreciate that. Um, two, construction costs are insanely high here. I heard from earlier in um, this meeting that like the town didn't get a grant because construction costs are so high. So I was like, okay, let's consider that in, in our percentage is the percentage based on a home that was bought when things were just different. And how do we count for that? Like that's something that um, again, is maybe not addressed in other programs, but should be and maybe will be in the future. So we can start to think about that as well. Um, let's see, uh, um, I think in one other, the, my, sort of my last comment is that I always personally liked the program more like Eagle County where they separated out capital improvements and additions. And I think that um, you know, when I read my deed restrictions, I see, I, it didn't talk about additions. It talks about capital improvements. And I think of them differently in the same way that Eagle County does. Where one is a change in like the structure and livable space of a building. And I think that has um, that's adding square footers, that's adding rooms to your deed restricted portfolio to house more people and more families um, in a deed restricted place. Capital improvements might be more of those personal choices of how you want um, to, you know, maybe the furnishing things, I think that's a personal choice, but there's the the benefit, if you separate them out to maintain the incentive under the capital improvements part, to have people take care of that place. Right? If you're capped at ten percent, you, you know, if we were to do addition at that ten percent right now, we're losing money. We're not going to recoup that. That's really hard. And that's, you know, part of why I'm standing here because I don't think that's fair. Um, but my point here is really that if you were to do that addition, there's no incentive to maintain this unit that is part of the Carbondale community housing portfolio. And so separating those two out is wise in my mind for those, you know, slightly different needs.
Okay.
Um, I think that's all I have. I'm sure I'll think of other things later today, but
Thanks.
Um, thank you for, for bringing it. Thank you, Jared, for doing all your research. Um, and we'll, you know, continue to work with you towards something that works um, for everybody. Thanks.
So clearly a lot of complexity here, different recommendations, even from the, just the couple of people who spoke on, on what makes the most sense. So I don't anticipate that right now uh, past nine o'clock at night is the best time for us to dive in and, and weigh in on what percentage of capital improvements should be um, you know, eligible for uh, addition of the sales price. But Jared, I feel like there's an immediacy to the question of how these folks can move forward. And then there's something that's going to take process and time. So we've heard some of these folks have submitted building permits. What's holding up approval of that building permit right now? Is it, is it us? Is it knowledge of how much will be recouped? Or is it something else?
Yeah, so um, e-essentially it was a, when reading through the deed restriction, the deed restriction lists out a list of seven very specific items in permitted capital improvements. When you read through the language of the deed restriction, it limits capital improvements to those kind of listed in this exhibit. And exhibits relatively similar for most of our deed restrictions. The deed restriction, and I don't have it in front of me, so I'm kind of paraphrasing, but it talks about um, some what, what we could construe as large scale improvements such as garages, finishing unfinished spaces such as basements, um, adding significant storage or other large fixed access to a building. And it calls those out very specifically, but it doesn't talk about additions to a dwelling unit. Um, there is in the list of permitted capital improvements, a kind of a, another category that just says permanent fixtures attached to a unit. And I apologize for not stating correctly, but um, you know, I think the, the difference is when I read that, um, I viewed that as not a addition. And that was more of a general all-purpose improvement to a home. And then an addition would be something separately. Um, and so that's kind of the reason we've been holding up this to get a policy discussion from the board of trustees because it is a very big issue, right? Not only for today and what it means for these current homeowners, but what it means for um, the housing stock, the variety of housing units, the mix of units and future homeowners. And um, I didn't feel comfortable making that decision at a staff level. And I felt that that should be a policy decision made by the board of trustees. And so we kind of kicked this conversation up to um, the trustee level to kind of help provide some direction on that. And that kind of led to the, the cover, the, the item that we discussed before with, you know, under the current deed restrictions, what percentage of that could be included? If we did categorize an addition under one of those existing categories in a deed restriction. Uh, feel free to
Yeah.
Jump in.
I would just add that, you know, these restrictions exist. Uh, our current policies exist. And I think that while the board can certainly proceed with policy changes, either in the near term or long term, that these issues need to be resolved independent of that. At least maybe they happen together, but if they, if you guys took three years to do with the policy, they can't wait for that. And then, um, so I, I have suggested in, in the case of one of these two issues that there be a meeting me and with Jared to try to, or I would just point out to the board that those are individualized site-specific property issues that the board really doesn't decide. They go through building permits, which is issued by the building officials, subject to appeal of the board of adjustment. Affordable housing decisions are, are subject to appeal to an affordable housing committee under our guidelines. And so there's really no um, direct role for the board to resolve the, these site-specific individualized issues presented by those two cases or others at the moment. Um, but I think Jared, as you just said, would like to, recognizing the policy issues presented, wanted to get your, your take, but we're going to need to continue the process to work with these folks independently of the schedule the trustees want to choose on this policy issue. That's my suggestion.
Okay. I mean, this is, this is just really complicated because I think we would all share an interest in helping them get their issue resolved and get clarity. Okay. I mean, this is, this is just really complicated because I think we would all share an interest in helping them get their issue resolved and get clarity and move forward one way or the other. Um, but that's not going to happen real quick for us to really thoroughly consider this and its, its impacts. But it sounds like that's going to be continued discussions at the staff level, but it sounds like that's.
They continue on parallel paths, um, but we can't wait for an uncertain policy discussion to continue those discussions.
Okay. There's a lot of questions here, Colin, Erica.
So is there already a, um, something in the deed restriction about how to deal with those capital improvements for these two units?
The deed restriction, as Jared just went through, has language on capital improvements. It also has a 10% cap on the value of the capital improvements. I think there's a difference in opinion on whether the 10% should be applied or not needs to be resolved, but that in my opinion is not for the trustees to resolve at this point, but not on a procedural path.
Okay.
And, and so we just got to do that. Now, if the board creates a different policy that opens up
other doors, other creative solutions, then perhaps that could be offered as an amendment to the current docs. But if you guys make no changes, we're going to have to deal with these cases based on the current docs.
And I think part of the complication was that the current docs mentioned capital improvements and then they call out a bunch of specific types that Jared mentioned, but they don't call out additions. So it's been unclear, are additions allowed? But it sounds like now there's lawyer involved. Is this right? And saying this making the legal claim that this includes allowing additions, but then it would be subject to the 10% cap.
That's not been, that's not part of what's been asserted. Anyway, I really don't think the board, I know it's hard, but I, I, I think we just got to keep the, it's sort of like, are you talking about a generalized zoning change of the comp plan versus a site specific development application that is not before you?
Right, okay.
So it's, it's hard.
Yeah, I think that's a good clarification because I think we kind of put off that discussion in February kind of based on the idea that we were going to have to provide some guidance on how we wanted to move forward with these. But if our guide guidelines, if our guidance on developing guidelines doesn't pertain to existing deed restrictions, then we're not achieving the goal because we were definitely on board in February with, um, or it felt like it with this, these folks being able to add an expansion to their house. So, um, if there's any guy, I, I know that was a site specific example, but it sounds like we want to see that move forward. Totally agree. At the same time as maybe we're die, deep diving into what things look like going forward. So I just wanted to chime in on the like, I would like this to be resolved for our residents in a positive way for them.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, it, it sounds like we're, we're not trying to stand in the way of the addition, but it's going to take some time to determine if there's a, an updated deed restriction that they could apply for, that they could sort of swap out for their current one that might give them more than what's written in theirs. But as is, they'd have to go with what's written in there, which is 10 or 20%. So they could do the addition, but it'd be, there's, there's nothing in the deed restriction right now that allows them to recoup the full value or 50% for that matter.
I, I'm concerned with the, the discussion that happened with, I guess, with previous, uh, staff is that there were, there were assurances that were made at some point. Once again, I thank you for, for a very comprehensive letter, um, and sort of outlining every, not, not just outlining, but, but getting into the nuts and bolts. I think, I think sometimes it's important for us to see that whether or not it's necessarily our place to, to, to make a decision, but to know, and just to, to further understand how it goes. Um, and I think the, the acknowledgement that, that yes, it's, it's now, you shouldn't compare what is now a three bedroom to, to what is a two bedroom, what was a two bedroom before is, is a wise, a wise one that, um, we, that clearly should be, uh, notated, um, in there. But to the, to the extent that, I, I mean, I have concerns over, over what, if, if there were documented promises made before, um, and residents proceeding with the, of, of every reasonable assumption that they, that they could do what they were doing. I, I don't know how like that, 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 that's, that to me is among, um, sort of the most troubling part here.
So I guess I have a question. Um, you keep saying that we can move these two conversations forward at the same time on separate paths, but they don't overlap at all because if I, if I understand.
In the case of an amendment, because I think the board would need to approve an amendment to an existing restriction. But if, if we need to reach decision points, appeals, whatever they may be under existing documents, that's a different path than you guys deciding what your policies look like going forward.
But does the, I guess my question is if the deed restrictions don't point to these guidelines, then changing these guidelines doesn't change anything for the deed restrictions?
We haven't, um, I don't know how to put this. We're processing this. This is relatively new to me. This letter from the attorney came in while I was in Montreal. I had to say, I am with my son graduating. I got back last Wednesday. I've looked at this for two days and a busy schedule. I don't have all the answers on all the interpretive issues. All I'm sure of is that there is nothing in the municipal code that provides for the board of trustees to make individualized decisions on these questions right now. It's a board, again, a board of, if our building official either refuses to issue a permit or issues one with adverse conditions, that goes to the board of adjustment. If there's an adverse decision about income qualifications or occupancy or all the other things that come up under deed restrictions, that goes to the affordable housing grievance committee. Um, as I understand it, there is no, there's no path at all, let alone an immediate path for the board to resolve these issues.
Can I ask one more question? Is it held up in planning or is it held up in building?
Both.
Okay, um. Did you have something, Chris? Other than a grunt?
Uh, I guess, I, so, hmm, um, yeah, I feel like I'm, I, I'm pretty bamboozled. Um, uh, the, it seems, it sounds like though that the staff has, has gotten to a point where they feel like they have, their hands are tied in terms of denial on this. And so it would sound to me like a pretty risky strategy to go in a legal direction with this for the applicants. They could be just denied and that would be that kind of, right?
I, I, I think.
Make sure you're in your mic so we can hear you.
I, I think it is on every, I think everybody, we might be just getting ahead of where we, I don't think those decisions have been made at the staff level after a full discussion. I think there's, as I understand it, likely a disagreement on the credit that would be allowed. Is it 10? Is it 20? Is it 50? Is it 100? Is it zero? That, that has not been, to my knowledge, discussed in a meeting. And that's what I'm suggesting to see if we, if we can get to a meeting of the minds on that. That strikes me as the main issue for resolution for these things to move forward.
And then secondarily, we don't even have a board of adjustments stood up at the moment, do we? It's just P and Z right now, right?
No, we don't, but we, um, will likely have one, uh, appointed in the near future.
And I think we have some good candidates. Maybe we could try to rope them in.
Yeah, we, we have some people who are willing to re-serve, have served in the past. It's just a matter of getting that processed and getting them appointed. So.
And maybe some of those P and Z applicants.
Okay. So it sounds like the, we're, what we're getting to is that this has been held up for a long time from staff to try to get direction from the board, but now the board's being told that we can't really give direction on this. And so it's back to staff to work with the applicants and potentially legal counsel to try to resolve whether we can issue a building permit and if so, um, how much will be, uh, recouped, uh, of that investment, but you're not asking us for direction on that right now. Is that right?
Not on these site specific applications. We are asking for direction on policy.
Okay.
For forward thinking that may be applied depending on how site specific applications move forward may be applied.
And what I would recommend on that, uh, so we have some action step here is, uh, Jared's suggestion of sort of a small working group. I mean, I'm thinking this is very small, probably one trustee, one P and Z member, somebody from staff, and then pulling in people who live in these developments, people with the HOAs like as needed to kind of run a, a little bit of a public process and come back to us with a recommendation, um, on the specifically the capital additions part. Um, and then I want to talk about those others separately for a moment, but how does that sound to the board as far as the next step on the most complex of these, um, which is the, um, the additions.
Is there anything, is there any part of this that, that we are on the same page on tonight? That we could give guidance on?
I think maybe some of the other parts. I just think that they, the capital improvement and additions to units is going to require a pretty thorough process. Like I'd feel, I'd be hesitant to give that input even without more people who live in these units coming in and without the HOA. I know the HOA for Thompson Corner in particular, has been very involved in this and, and has a lot of expertise to bring to bear. So, um, I would just be reluctant to say it's 50% or it's full value or it's one of these other numbers right now.
At, at the risk of, of making this a larger concern, how, how can we establish these meetings so that, so that there's enough, um, I mean, I would love to have, have actually had this discussion with 30 members of the public who, who can bring to bear, you know, whether every, whether everybody wants to do an addition and everybody, you know, or there, or a more wide ranging kind of sort of views, but you know, we didn't, we didn't know about this till Thursday or Friday. And certainly the public, unless they, you know, they didn't know about it any sooner. Um, and so I'm just wondering how we can do that. And now, now we're accommodating by, by having a small group. Um, and I'm wondering whether there's, there's a different way that we can talk at some point about, about having, having this big item of conversation on the agenda a month ahead of time so that we can really encourage people to show up and not not, no, no one's blaming them, but, but not wish, not wish, not wish that they had showed up. And, and I'm, I'm finding that kind of disappointing a little bit. And I, I'm not, not anyone's fault, but like just sort of systemically, is there something we can do to?
Can I address that?
Yeah.
The, the. Make sure you're using your mic.
The guidelines, the guidelines don't require any public notice to, you know, it needs to be on the agenda clearly, clearly. Thursday meets it, right? But the, the guidelines don't require public notes, but you can always do that. You can treat it as if it were a zoning change and go ahead and publish notice and put it in the paper and put it on the website. It is fine to do extra notice. And if you're trying to get more people into the discussion, that, that can be achieved.
So that's going to be a process and that's going to take some time. Um, it sounds like the immediate needs of the people here tonight are going to be a separate and parallel process, but um, is the board in support of, um, probably staff coming back to us with a little bit of a timeline for that? Um, makeup of a working group. I think we've got a, a idea in mind here of staff, um, one trustee, one P and Z member, and then some key people from these other groups and that their role would be to engage lots of people. I mean, really, most people in the community aren't going to be engaged in this. People who live in affordable housing are going to be very engaged or people who are applying and actively um, looking in that direction. Um, so it's a fairly small, you know, group to try to capture their attention. Does that sound like a good next step for that one? And then we'll see what, if there's any guidance we can give on any of the others or a process for those. Okay. Does that make sense, Jared? Kind of building off our conversation this morning?
Do we need a little, any more help with this? Like a consulting help?
Jess says no. What does Jared say?
I just want, it's an option. I'd be supportive of it if we need it, but if we don't need it, that's your call.
I, I think it really depends upon where you guys want to go with some of these big discussions. And there might be some outside assistance we need to tackle, you know, one or two of them, but I think the majority of them, it's really, you know, I'll, I'll pick on rentals and roommates. It's really a very straightforward policy decision. Do you guys want to pursue an additional level of rental roommates? Uh, guidelines and enforcement mechanisms like that, that I don't think we need outside assistance. We can likely pull language from existing policies, but if you want a, you know, deep dive into financial implications of the, the capital improvements and a bunch of financial analysis and there might be some need for third party assistance in, in some of those unique situations.
I didn't, I, 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 I have full trust in staff and I know we have limited staff. And there's a lot on your plate, so I just wanted, that's a potential option. There are some folks we were working with, with the IHOP grant, potentially they could be helpful. So I'll leave it up to you, but I'm, I'm supportive if we need need help. And the other thing would be to include Garfield County Housing around this, the staffing and cost around doing some of these extra things, which I think would be valuable, checking do people own extra property, um, some kind of simple recertification. I like the idea of getting a, a little bump if you've been in the lottery for a number of years and you're not winning. You don't want, can you get a little extra? But, um, they would be managing that. So I'd love to know what that might cost. So we can think about it in terms of budget.
Erica. Well, and while we might agree on a few things on the other list, I would at least want them, like this working group could be really, if we have some folks who are um, on the HOA from our affordable housing neighborhoods or living in them, having them weigh in on them would be really helpful to me because I have not had to go through the lottery process, you know, and so I just, there's a few things that like, it's easy right now. And I'm like, oh yeah, we should do that. And then, uh, just realizing they're like, well, does, is that, does that make sense? Or what are, what is their input? They might have ideas. So, um, I don't want to slow things down, but I feel like almost with all of them, once I go through them, because I wrote down things that I'm like, yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, we'll do that. And then I'm realizing that I don't have that perspective and I, none of us do. So, um.
And there's reasons why we don't do them because we're not on the staff form.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Anyway.
I have been in affordable housing and have been through this process. Yeah.
That's good experience.
I actually like the action step. I know it's hard because it sounds like this, you know, certain people want immediate and I think that's great, but we also have to be, like somebody said, we have to make sure it works for everybody. And I think doing an action step and getting more people involved because, you know, I, I feel affordable housing can be complicated. And unless we know what, I, I like the action step and getting more people involved. I, I feel like more people will be involved because not only, you know, people who've gone through affordable housing, but yet it's like people who want to get involved with affordable housing, but maybe they can't because now people are stuck there, stuck in affordable housing. So I think it would be a really good action step to involve not just people in affordable housing, but everybody in the community because we all care about affordable housing.
Okay. So it sounds like we're not going to give guidance on any of these tonight then. Um, are there any of these that we don't want a, a working group or kind of a, this is going to be like a short-lived task force working group. This is not a long-term committee. I would think in a two or three meetings, something like that, they'd be able to go through these. It's the only item on their agenda, you know, coming in prepared, getting input from people. And again, coming to us with a recommendation so that we'll then still have our full discussion and there will be a public process there. But, um, a pretty efficient move it forward. Um, are there any of these that we're like, no, we really don't want to do that? I mean, I think the prioritization, it sounds like we need some input on the rentals and roommates, whether that requires approval, probably need input on the short-term rental stuff. It sounds like that's the most straightforward one. That's just adding language somewhere. Um, the requalification, I mean, that's one where my gut is like, no, don't make people do that and keep the program simple, but it seems like it's worth the working group considering, but it seems like the main thing that we want them to really bring back a recommendation on with public input is the capital improvement, the additions and how that works.
An al- alternate view here, I, I'm reluctant to kind of over, uh, or to, to, to throw more bureaucracy at this, um, when we seem to be set up minus the fact that it's 9:30, set up for a discussion here, minus maybe more people that we wanted to hear from. And I would be more comfortable with basically re, redoing this conversation in inviting, you know, no, with, with, with a date certain for the meeting. Um, and a clear, a clear agenda of what, what we want to make decisions on. Um, and a, a clear invitation to homeowners, uh, both, um, free market and an affordable housing. So that, so that we can bring our ideas. Um, I'm, I'm kind of reluctant to, to sort of push it off to a working group, um, and let it kind of stew in there and not know what the discussions were, what the, what the, um, you know, what the easy discussions were, what the hard discussions were there. And I think Jared is, um, has done an amazing job putting together a, like a very thorough document for us to, you know, to look at a toolkit. to look at a toolkit and we're not, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. We've got a lot of, a lot of housing authorities each doing it slightly different ways. Um, but nobody, you know, nobody that far from the center line. Um, I think we had, you know, we had uh, our community members suggest that fifty percent option. And I remember looking at that more thoroughly, I don't have it up at the moment, but that seemed to make a lot of sense. Um, coming, you know, and and to, to have someone, you know, who probably is not gonna make any money on that, but understands that it seems to be about right. Um, I, I can sense us potentially going, spending a lot more hours on this, only to circle back to that fifty percent. Um, and I would, I'm reluctant to kind of do that. If, if that's, if that's what we had to do, it's not the end of the world, but I, I, I feel like we kind of were here to make a decision um, and to provide some clear guidance. And I think we could, could do that, or, or if we, if what we're really wanting is more public in, in, input, then we can ask them to show, or ask folks to show up, but you know, we can't do that on a Friday.
Okay, other thoughts on that? I mean, we can do this ourselves, we typically, boards and commissions typically bring us recommendations. So it's rare that we get into the weeds this deep on an issue this complex at these meetings. Um, but we could choose to do that. Any other thoughts from either staff or board members on whether this is gonna stay at our level or we're gonna um, kind of delegate it and ask for a recommendation?
Well, I don't know if it's mutually exclusive, is it?
Well, no, it would end with us and we would have that discussion, but Ross is correct, that there'd be details and discussions just like when someone gets to us after P and Z or anybody else where we don't question every single detail. We look at their recommendation, we look at the minutes, we ask questions, but we move fairly efficiently from that recommendation to a decision. Whereas getting to that recommendation is hours of work, so we would need to calendar hours of time, I think, to um, to hear out. I mean, we just heard different proposals even from the two folks that are here tonight, who are in the same situation um, on what's fair.
Since you're the board rep to this group, we have a thought.
I think that, I think that you'll get, I think we'll get both. I think that if we start in the weeds and start with a group that really understands what's happening and the stakeholders that are involved, and I think that we should make sure that that stakeholder group is not super small. Like I, I think that it should be one person from the board of trustees, one person from P and Z, a staff member. But I don't think that that group needs to be one group, maybe it's three meetings with three groups or as many people as we can get to each of those meetings. That makes a lot of sense to me to get as many perspectives as we possibly can. And then we have our public process with the rec recommendations from that group. That makes sense to me, because we will know that the public process is coming for longer than we normally would when it shows up on our agenda the week before. So I think addressing Ross's concerns, I think if we do it that way, the, the stakeholder groups will know that that public process is coming and they can spread the word. And we can have the discussions that you're talking about in this open public meeting in a way that is, is really efficient and beneficial and it's not just throwing things at the wall. So I think we, we do need to get as many people as we possibly can to really look at this. People who, who live in these houses, people who understand deed restrictions. And I think that, I think that there's people in our community that are willing to do that without bringing in an outside consultant. That's why I said no at first. And I'm not saying like, no, I don't want professional expertise, but I think so often we miss the expertise we have among us and we're bringing in consultants from other places anyways. Um, and so if we can do it in an efficient way outside of this room and then bring it back. And our jobs are to make sure that people know that those meetings are coming.
Great, I'm here in support, let's go with the working group, unless we wanna move into a different direction.
Sounds good.
But it sounds like that's the direction that we're going in. So um, Jared, I think we'll um, look to you for kind of a structure around that. And a, and a timeline for when we think it'll come back to us. Um, but they'll be able to really get into the weeds and air it all out and then bring it back to us and we'll air it out some more. Um, again, just like we do with anything that goes through P and Z, but we don't all go all the way back to square one. And, and a lot is learned in those um, working group and boards and commissions discussions um, where they say, you know, we all came in thinking this and then we went in this direction. And I think that I'd like for us to have that come to us. Anything else you need from us tonight? Okay, thank you, I mean, I think you've heard really uh, clear appreciation for the level of detail that's gone into this um, tonight. And, you know, we have a system that is, is simple and I think that that's nice. And I think if we can maintain some of that simplicity, that's a good thing. I don't think we wanna get as complicated and um, regulatory as some of the other systems around here. And we know that Garfield County Housing Authority and Town of Carbondale don't have the staff for that. So I would encourage us as we go into this, we might need to give the working group some direction along those lines. Like some goals are, keep it as simple as possible, but provide air, provide clarity on things where there's currently none. Without adding too much, okay?
Yeah. Um, just one last, I, uh, on the, I just would kind of still encourage staff to try to figure out how to expedite the existing, you know, roadblock for these people. I just do think that's important and maybe they do have to take some risk to some degree of maybe we don't, maybe they're not getting an immediate resolution to what kind of value they're getting back. But it'd be nice if they can at least, you know, try to, you know, start scheduling things and stuff like that. And, and I guess it doesn't seem like the, necessarily the, I mean, I don't know, it sounds like very complicated, but it doesn't seem like necessarily the building co, building codes or the, or the planning codes are necessarily holding it up, but it's more these housing guidelines. And so I guess I just feel like, you know, trying to be as, as, trying not to let this other thing hold that back as much, as, as best we can, be nice, so.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks, everybody, meeting is earned.